Testing. Test.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Item A, I need a first and second motion to approve an agreement with Insurance Program Managers Group IPMG effective July first, twenty twenty three for a four-year term with an estimated annual amount of seventy five thousand dollars.
Emotion.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions to this motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Chair Florine.
Aye.
Motion passed, I assume?
Motion.
Thank you, sir. Item B, I need a first and second motion to approve a settlement and release of all claims for police department workers compensation claim number two-two-one-one-one-one-zero-W-zero-one-four for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Similar.
I second.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions to this motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Florine.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Item C, I need a first and second motion to ratify the engagement of the Driscoll Law Firm LLC at all to provide legal services to the city of Waukegan related to PFAS slash AFFF multi-district litigation.
Similar.
I second.
Thank you, ladies. So just for a little information on this, Corporation Council recommends that the city adopt the attached resolution ratifying the engagement of the Driscoll Law Firm to represent the city in an ongoing multi-district litigation against manufacturers of PFAS chemicals, which we have in our water here at the lakefront. So just so everyone knows what that's about. Anybody have any questions? Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Florine.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. There is no old business or reports or communications, so I need a first and second motion to adjourn at six oh three.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call? Oh, I guess we can do a voice vote, sorry.
Motion passes.
Well, you have to say it all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I forgot that was my job. Okay.
We are adjourned.
Good evening, everybody. It is now 6:05 on July 3rd, 2023. I'd like to call to order the Community Development Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Okay. Item C is, may I please have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of the July, or excuse me, the June 5th, 2023 meeting of the Community Development Committee?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question about this. The minutes say that Chairman Rivera called the meeting to order, and he's no longer an alderman. So I think we probably need to change that to...
We'll make that correction. I'm sorry, that was an oversight.
That's okay.
He's here in spirit. Okay, we had a first from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Donenworth. It's a motion to approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2023 meeting of the Community Development. Alderman, Alderwoman Florian had a question. Are there any other questions? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Audience time. Are there any members of the audience that would like to address the committee? All right, old business, they're being done. On to new business. Item A is a discussion of the City of Waukegan Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Program Year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPER, C-A-P-E-R.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So I am coming to you tonight. We have, we put this out for a 15-day comment period to take a look at the CAPER, to examine it. It details the accomplishments that we accomplished during our 2020 program year, 2022 year, which is May 1st, 2022, to April 30th, 2023. It lays out the different programs that we did and what we accomplished. It is a draft, so we're still taking any suggestions, questions, identifying anything that might have been overlooked or mistaken. I actually just seen something just a few seconds ago when I was looking at it again. So overall, just to go over briefly, the numbers that you see... It gives you the goals that we identified in our consolidated plan, and the numbers, they look crazy. They never make any sense. This is not my doing. This is IDIS, the Integrated Dispersment Information System, which is HUD system, in which they come up with these numbers. And we don't have a way to correct these. These are generated when you do the report. But throughout the program, we explain in the narrative, the actual numbers that we receive for the different programs. It talks about the racial and ethnic composition and the number of people who were serviced through our public service programs. For example, on page number eight. In addition, it talks about our housing rehab program on page 11. Our goal was to do 10 rehabs a year. We did a total of 16 this year. We talk about homelessness. We talk about the other things that we, that we do. We're actually in a process. We still have programs that are ongoing now that was identified. The lead line replacement program, the beach accessibility program, the sidewalk improvement program, the CARES X-Mall Business Program, and the micro enterprise business program. Those are ongoing activities that we're currently doing now. I actually just received the grant application from HUD today. So the mayor signed off on it, and we had, we need to get it back to HUD so that we'll be able to get our funding for program year 2023, which is really a good thing for us, because last year we received our funding in November. So, so we never get it May 1st as we should, when the program year starts over, but this year it seems like hopefully we'll be getting it before the end of August, hopefully. So meanwhile, we're still doing our projects from program year 2022 funding. So we're actually still using that funding and going forward. That's what I wanted to point out. So any questions about anything?
Yes, ma'am. Director, this is the performance evaluation report. Is that, who's doing the evaluation? HUD is evaluating?
Well, well, we put into the system what we've done throughout the year.
Right.
And then, what, what, once we, we do the 15 days, so you guys take a look at it.
So you're reporting to HUD?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they take a look at it and, and basically approve. If they see anything wrong, they always find. HUD always finds something. So then we have to respond to it.
So you're evaluating your input against what you previously input as your goals?
Yeah. So our goals that we put in for the consolidated plan.
Right.
Then the action plan is what we do yearly.
Right, right.
And then CAPER, we're, we're, we're telling what we, our accomplishments we done for that year, and they evaluate them.
Is there a methodology wherein your department receives feedback from the community?
Yes, that's what this is for. It's a 15-day comment period, so they can respond to it. We also, when we do the public hearing for the action plan, they can have anything to say about our funding, the program, whatever they, they would like to say.
So how does that work? You do, you're gonna do a series of public hearings, where you, you just publicize, hey, call us if you had a problem, or...
So, so for example, for this, we do a 15-day comment period for the, for this particular report. However, coming down, we'll be doing a public hearing for our, an amendment to the action plan. So whenever we do an amendment to that, that's a 30-day comment period. They can do it in writing. They can email it to us. They can call it in, however they want to do it. They can let us know what they think. And as a matter of fact, I have come up with a survey that we also hand out, like, for example, for the housing rehab program, to get feedback from the homeowners about what they think about their experience was, what they thought about the rehab, the whole process. So that's something that I've implemented here. Actually, a couple weeks ago, I actually implemented that, so we'll get the feedback from the public. So if there's anything we need to change or anything.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Florian.
Thank you, sir. So I know you said in the beginning, the numbers on pages three, four, and five are crazy.
They are crazy.
But all of them say percent complete zero. Why is that?
Because they're still technically open, because we have the, the con plan. So the con plan is from program year 2020 to 2024. So you won't have final numbers until the, the whole con plan is completed.
Okay. Seems crazy that they even put that in there, then, if it's not gonna be anything but zero. So, and then on page 11, down at the bottom, it says, discuss the difference between goals and outcomes and problems encountered in meeting the goals. The challenges such as a delay in the allocation distribution, an available pool of contractors, and the lack of qualified contractors. So I know you guys held an open house trying to get contractors, right? Was that over the winter? I can't remember.
Yes, we did it in, I believe it was either January or February.
Okay, doesn't matter, but I, I knew it was in about six months ago. So was that successful? Have you...
Yes, we actually, yes, we actually did, to date, we actually got a total of 15 new contractors.
Oh, nice. So roughly what you've done, you said you've done 10, so that's a little less than one a month. So now that you have these new contractors, you're gonna be able to do more? Is that...
Yeah, so, so like, for example, we, we have a list of, like I said, 110 people on the list. That grows all the time. We'll get an emergency. I mean, we got a couple of people who put in for an application as of today. So we get emergencies all the time. So we do emergencies right away, and then we have substantials. If you're on the list, then we'll get, we'll get to you. If you, if you do, if you receive an emergency, you'll stay on the list. Once your name comes up, then we would do a substantial rehab, which is, we would do more. So for, for example, if you have a plumbing issue, we want to do the plumbing issue right away, and then we will address code violations and safety issues once your name comes up for the substantial. It can, it varies so much. So, and then it just depends on if we're able to get contractors to bid on the jobs and stuff like that. So like I said, the lack of contractors. And then we'll have new contractors. They'll sign up, they'll do everything, and then when we send the bids out, we won't get a response, because some of them, they have been so busy, so, so busy, so they can take their pick, really, you know? So we're kinda at the mercy of the contractors.
So one more question, and then I'll be done. You mentioned the emergencies. So how many of those do you do in a year? That's, I'm assuming, not included in the 10 substantial?
Yeah, no, this is included. So we actually ended up doing... We did, we did 13 emergencies, and we actually, no, I'm sorry, we did 14 emergencies. This isn't correct. We did 14 emergencies, 14 emergencies and two substantials.
So 16 for the year, basically?
16 for the year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a couple of quick questions. 16 for the year, did that, is that what got you to the $700,000 on page, page nine? It said, to date, $702,000 and change of the slightly less than 1.1 million have been expended.
On what page?
Page, page nine in the narrative.
No, so that's actually since 2020. So it's, it's, it's keeping a running total of the amount that we're spending.
Okay. Do we expect to receive the same amount in HUD funding that we received for last year, or for the last year?
No, we actually got a decrease of 75 thou, I'm sorry, 60, around $65,000. So it's like 7,000, 7,000, this is like 7,000... 726,000 and some change that we got. So that's the allocation that we're getting. However, we still have funding that we have from the previous year that adds together to be able to do the other, other projects, as well as we do have some COVID money that we have left that we have to spend. So we have, you know, we have that amount of money to spend, but yet it decreased a lot, $65,000.
Okay. Was there any reason for the decrease?
They said that they added more entitlement communities. So as they add more entitlement community, that takes away from us. And then another thing in terms of, that's why so, the census is so important, because we need real numbers. And if our numbers decrease, then that decreases the amount of money that we give for low to moderate income people in our community. So that makes a difference.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Last question, oh, I'm sorry. Last question, or maybe suggestion. You might be doing this, so I apologize. But are we working with, or is your group working with code enforcement when they go out and they see a code violation that they may be able to recommend?
Yes.
To the homeowner or whomever?
Yes. So as a matter of fact, we're, we're working with them that, so our emergency, the emergency list that we have, we also treat code violations as emergencies, too. So technically, we're doing emergencies, and then once we get done with emergencies, plumbing, roof leak, that kind of thing, then we, then that goes on to address code violations, you know, exterior code violations that they may see and stuff like that. So we do address that. One thing we do not do, we do not do fences. We don't, we don't address fences. We do not do driveways. So that's something that we do not do outside of a rehab. So if we did a sewer issue and we tore up the driveway, yes, we would replace the driveway, but we wouldn't just do it. And another code violation we get a lot is fences, driveways, and garages, or outhouses or whatever. If the garage is not attached, we cannot address it. So a lot of code violations are those things that we can't address those, but other than that, we could address them.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. Alderwoman Bolton, did you have a question?
Yeah. What qualifies the entitlement community, as you had mentioned?
You have to have a number of low to moderate income individuals in your community. And with us, we're also a part of a consortium. So it's Lake County, North Chicago, and the City of Waukegan, and we're all together. So because of that, we're able to get home dollars in which we don't have to compete for. So because we are an entitlement community, and we have a lower percentage of low to moderate income individuals, that, that puts it, the category of being an entitlement community.
Thank you. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director. Okay, we are on to item B. It's a resolution to approve the purchase of two MPS Falcon 3100 portable camera trailer systems pursuant to Section 2-458, subsection I, two of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances, for an amount not to exceed $118,000. Can I have a first and a second?
Motion.
Second.
First from Alderman Turner, second from Alderwoman Florian. Do I have to reread this again?
No.
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 All right, do we have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may. I just wanted to, you actually have two of them out in the park. Not only do you guys haven't had a chance to go look, but they're very impressive. And Chief Navarro was kind enough to kind of give me a overview, a description of what they're capable of. And I went out and looked at them and saw Deputy Chief Chastain is out there actually working on one. So they are really impressive. They're gonna add great capabilities to our public safety effort. It's particularly related to these large-scale events such as SCOOP, which is SCOOP Waukegan, that's coming up this weekend. And I think this is a no-brainer. And for what they're capable of, what they provide for us, this is an extremely reasonable price. I think you did a good job negotiating that with Chief. Thank you.
So.
Yeah. If you guys, and before they get deployed, maybe tonight or tomorrow, you guys go out there and take a look at them. You're gonna really be impressed with what they're, what they are and what they do. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Chairman Hayes.
Aye. Motion passes. Item C is a resolution approving participation in the Lake County Home Consortium. May I have a motion and a second for agenda item C?
Second.
Okay, first from Alderwoman Newsome, first, a second from Alderwoman Florian. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Chairman Hayes.
Aye. Motion passes. Item D is a resolution awarding a contract for the demolition of the animal shelter building to McDonough Demolition, the lowest qualified bidder, for a not-to-exceed amount of $24,500. May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
First from Alderwoman Newsome, second from Alderwoman Florian. Roll call, please. Oh, you know what? Let me read the, the motion. So Public Works is seeking approval for the award of the demolition of the animal shelter building, RFP to the lowest qualified bidder, McDonough Demolition, for a not-to-exceed amount of $24,500, to be charged to 307130726369. The bid opening was on June 21st, 2023, with six bids being received. And there was a bid tab attachment, which I'm happy to walk through if anybody wants that.
Question?
Roll call, please.
Question?
Were there any questions?
Yeah. See, I seem to recall, I think, I thought that when we talked about this project... It seemed, I seem to recall, I think, I thought that when we talked about this project, the demolition was included in the one point two million, or one, with the one point two, one point five million that we're spending on the construction of the facility. I thought that, I seem to recall someone specifically asked, or specifically mentioned that the company that was doing the construction was going to demolish the existing building. Is that not accurate?
Originally, we weren't going to tear the other building down, we were going to keep it. So it wasn't discussed originally because we were keeping the old building and building the new one just to the west of it.
Right, we, we were going to do something, something that was going to happen with that old building.
Well, eventually, it was going to be taken down, I believe, but originally, we weren't talking about that as part of the bid. It was just the bid to build the new facility. And now they've decided they need the whole space, I'm not really sure why.
So we, we decided to build a new building, but not tear down the old building, and now we come back again and say we're going to tear down the old one. That doesn't sound like very effective project planning to me. All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah. No.
Do you want to ask him a question, Alderman Turner?
No.
No, okay. Let me for a sec, roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Item E is a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce for office space at one hundred North Martin Luther King Junior Avenue. Um, can I have a first and a second for this, item agenda E?
So move.
First from Alderman Newsom, can I get a second? Second. Second from Alderman Donenworth. Any questions? Alderman Florian?
Um, I, I believe this was a well-written lease, I believe. I, I understand the point some people are, are, you know, making with this. I just don't think this is a good thing for the city to be doing at this point. Space in City Hall is at a premium. Um, we're, you know, we've already had to remodel some places to make more room for people. Um, I just don't see where this is a good use of space. Um, I don't think it's appropriate really for the city to be leasing out space to another entity, even though they're a nonprofit entity. Um, there are other nonprofits in the city that do work for economic development of the city, not just the Chamber of Commerce, and I, I just think it's a bad look for us to pick one group to say, "We want you to have space in our City Hall."
Chimney cricket. I agree with you.
Isn't that strange?
That is really strange.
Better circle that, this is a day on the calendar, everybody.
I have a question.
Alderman Turner, do you have any, uh, questions or comments?
Alderman Florian said it, and I'm in total absolute agreement with Alderman Florian.
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman.
Can we revisit the nature and intent of why this was even established? Can someone give us the history of this?
They were, I think, they were already, they're already in here, I think they already have space in here somehow, is that right? George?
Well, they used the, the conference room, I know, because they've been in there when I've come for my, my aldermanic briefings. They're in there holding their board.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, when I've come for my aldermanic briefing on Thursday mornings at nine o'clock, they're in the conference room using it for their board meeting. But I don't know that they have official space. Is there, is there assistant here now? I mean, I don't even know.
Yeah, well, I seem to recall in our briefing.
I don't know for sure. Um, I believe there's some space that they have been using, but that's just observation. Um, we could ask Chief of Staff Bridges to come in, he may have more familiarity with them.
George, can you hear us?
Yeah, I just wonder what caused this to even be an issue, why they have to use up the space here?
Well, if you can get space for ten dollars a month, you're going to take it, trust me. If I could get it for ten dollars a month, I would take it. I mean, ten dollars a year, sorry, ten dollars a year, I would take it.
You can move your practice in here.
I would, I would put it right down on the first floor.
All right, maybe if we can, we'll see if Chief of Staff Bridges comes in.
I just was curious of why it was even, like you said, compared to other establishments.
Council, maybe you, you could help.
Absolutely, and I'm sure, uh, Chief of Staff Bridges, when he arrives, may cover some of these points. Um, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce has formed a partnership, uh, with the city of Waukegan. Uh, and the city of Waukegan, Waukegan actually provides a, um, a, a payment, a stipend annually in the amount of five thousand dollars, uh, to the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce. That's just to, um, I, I'm not speaking on whether or not this is, uh, something that's good or bad. These are just things that the city has that, um, is, is already established. Uh, and so, uh, this, this lease, this ten dollar lease, uh, sh- may be viewed in light of the, the partnership that the city does have, as well as the five thousand dollar payment that the city makes on an annual basis. And we do have, uh, Chief of Staff Bridges.
And so my original question, Chief, was, uh, why was this originally, or what was the origin of why this was established? Why are we?
Um, the last contract that we had with them to lease our space was in two thousand and eighteen. That expired, I think, end of that year, fiscal year. And after reviewing it, it was brought to our attention that we should have a contract with them to be inside of our building per liability, and just to make sure that everything was, um, done properly. So that's the reason why we brought it to you, to have a contract that is signed when they are using the city of Waukegan space.
Alderman Florian?
Well, why, why do they get space?
Don't we always also have an agreement or a partnership with Waukegan Main Street? And didn't we used to have office space available to them? And don't we give them twenty thousand dollars a year or something?
Yes, we give them twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
How come they don't get this space?
They did not ask for this space.
Well, I'm asking, can I have some too?
Yes.
Me too.
I'm not sure about the history of the chamber, um, of them having a space here, I don't have that history on here.
So what is the partner, what do we do, and what is this partnership, what?
They are economic development partners, they assist us with, um, the, um, advocating for our businesses that are located here in the city of Waukegan. They spotlight them, they make sure that they are, um, have a direct access here to the city of Waukegan, so they can encourage growth of our businesses within the city. Um, my, oh, my director isn't in here anymore, but Director Noel and many others have been also a part of that. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I'm so used to seeing you right there. Um, she could speak on it also, because she was a partner with them before. But they have asked for the space, they've been meeting in the mayor's office every, twice a month. Um, and then we gave them the space after someone else was asking, another elected official of body was asking for the space to utilize, and we partnered with our Waukegan Chamber of Commerce to, um, assist them.
Wouldn't it make sense for the Chamber of Commerce to engage in commerce at the most basic level with a commercial entity rather than a governmental body?
They have.
Should they be renting office space like everybody else does, and wanting empty spaces on Genesee or county? And there's plenty of office space out there, and it's, granted, it's, uh, costs more than ten dollars a year, but that's market rate, and that's what they should be doing.
They have their own board, they are the ones that have pursued having a space here in direct connection with the city of Waukegan.
Are any of them here today?
Um, nope. Yes, we do have a member, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but we do have a member here.
Would any member like to address the committee?
There's actually two of them, one is standing up.
We've heard from one.
Different hat on.
All right, well, the way I see it, we can do a couple of different things. We can vote it down, we can vote to amend it, if you guys feel that maybe you want to reject the, the lease. We can keep them in the space for a certain amount of time until they can find alternative space. We can hold it over and tell them that, hey, listen, uh, we're going to figure out what market rent is, and we're going to charge a market rate rent. I think we can go about it a couple of different ways.
Uh, at this point, could I just ask that you hold it over? I was not involved in this, I just found out on Friday that this was happening. There has been a history of a partnership with the city. Twenty years ago, when the Genesee Theater was under construction, and a planning and zoning office was, uh, in the old Penny's Building. Uh, the chamber had an office there. They had one downstairs here up until two years ago, and then they went up to the third floor, I'm told. And now there's talk about it being back on the first floor again. So I, I, what I would suggest is if you could hold it over, and there could be an educational process uh, between the chamber and the alderman, because, uh, you know, it's...
I would, I would like to do that, because, I mean, from my perspective, I, I see the events the chamber has. I know they've done, um, scholarships for the kids and stuff, but I don't see, at least from my perspective, I haven't seen where there's support of business and economic development. So if I can be told exactly what's going on in that avenue, then I may be more willing to support something like this, but...
I, I'll pass it on to the chairman and, and the other board members.
Okay, so we have a first to hold it over, can I have a second? Is that, am I going about this the right way?
You can just hold it over.
You can just hold it over, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you could just hold it over.
Perfect, thank you.
Will do, thank you.
And so just, just to clarify, this will be to the, uh, first meeting of, uh, to the next CDC meeting, August, I think, seventh?
First meeting in August.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, yes, thanks, Chief. Agenda item F is a motion to adopt, adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of a subdivision, uh, public improvement agreement with PT Land LLC for the River Glen subdivision, finalization of public improvements. Can I get a first and a second to item F?
I'll make a motion.
So, okay, uh, first from Alderman Turner, a second from Alderman Florian, are there any questions to the motion?
I'd like to ask, um, I'm a huge proponent of our Park District, and I'd like to know if there's going to be a park in this subdivision?
Uh, there was a, um, an impact fee agreement that was negotiated with the prior developers, and the current developers have been, um, advised to discuss the impact fee agreements with all of the other bodies for which there were existing agreements. So they should, the developer will be following up with the other governmental units.
So that just means they could just make a donation to the Park District and they could use it somewhere else, so?
I have not refreshed my recollection on what that impact fee set, agreement says.
Do you, I haven't seen a, I tried to find a layout and I couldn't find it, I don't know if I just didn't look in the right place. Is there any open space available?
Here, I have a layout for you.
Oh.
Um, there, there is a layout within one of the documents that was posted there.
Oh, I must just not have been able to find it, okay.
It's quite all right.
Oh, that's a nice space, that's the size of almost four lots, so that would make a great, and it's kind of almost in the center.
Yeah, I don't recall what the impact fee agreement with the Park District said, so.
Okay, um, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, roll call, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye, motion passes. Uh, item G is a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven thirteen, the site plan approval for an additional drive-through lane at the existing restaurant at eight fifty South Waukegan Road, which I believe is a Culvers. Um, can I get a first and a second?
First.
Second.
All right, a first from Alderman Florian, a first, uh, excuse me, a second from Alderman Turner. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Agenda item H is a motion to adopt an ordinance amending a conditional use permit and approving a variance for zoning calendars twenty-seven fourteen and twenty-seven fifteen for the operation of a sports facility at an educational institution at thirty-one oh six Belvedere Road. Can I have a first and a second?
First.
Second.
First from Alderman Turner, second from Alderman Newsom. Are there any questions to the motion?
Um, I, I don't really have a question, but I just, um, I'm, I'm excited this project is going forward. I, I, I hope everyone will support it. Um, it, there's a, a lot to this, I mean, there's a lot of, of conditions that have been put on it. I'm assuming, I, I know I sat through planning and zoning and watched you guys, but you can make it work with what we've asked, right?
No, I, uh, there's two conditions that they...
Would you come up to the podium, please? Um, in particular, there's a condition related to their request to IDOT, which the timing is out of their control. Um, and so staff understands that and is willing to work on a resolution for that.
Okay, if you don't mind, if you could introduce yourself.
Sure. Uh, my name's Preston Kendall, I'm the president of Cristo Ray St. Martin College Prep. Um, the, the two conditions that we actually have concerns about are, are twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-one is just simply that, um, it looks like they dropped in a similar condition to the driving range, and it mentions the driving range, but we don't have a driving range, we have a, a soccer field. So it looks like there has to be some wordsmithing there with monitoring bird activity and making sure that it's not, uh, detrimental to, to birds. And, and believe me, our student environmental club would have a fit if it was, uh, detrimental to birds, and we'd, uh, we'd be working with them to come up with solutions, so, um, that's, that's one. And then twenty-two really kind of goes with twenty-four. Um, twenty-four says the applicant must continue to coordinate the Illinois Department of Transportation for a traffic light. So this all boils down to the fact that, that we are looking, uh, just for people that know where we are, we're at the old Kmart on Belvedere, um, and we've purchased the old Bell Lane Motel and tore that down, and then we just recently purchased the Slumberland Motel, uh, and tore that down. So, uh, two big eye sores on Belvedere. Um, but the, uh, the issue for us is, when IDOT came and, and widened Belvedere, uh, we worked with them to have cutouts for a new entrance to our parking lot that lined up with Birch on the south side of Belvedere with the hope of getting a light. And we have submitted a traffic study to IDOT, and we are told by our traffic study consultants that it's a two-year process. So we are trying to work on getting a traffic light at that location. If we get a traffic light at that location, our landscaping for the entire parking lot that this calls in, not just the, the landscaping for the sports field, but for our entire property, looks very different than if we don't get a light. If we don't get a light, we're likely to keep, we'll have a, we'll have a small driveway at Birch, but we're, we're likely to keep the main entrance where it is, near the Burger King. Um, and, and we would landscape differently. But if we, if we do get a light, uh, the frontage of Belvedere becomes, uh, valuable property, and we, we have the possibility of making outlots that we could lease long-term or, or even sell, uh, for future development. So, um, we would then landscape a very different way, uh, if we had the light. So that's, uh, that's, that's our issue. We can't really pull the trigger and go in for a permit on landscaping until we have resolution of the traffic light. So, um, what I, what I'd like to do with twenty-two is, rather than putting in, after we get, uh, approval of the CUP for the sports field, but tie it back to, once we get a definitive, uh, answer from IDOT on whether we are going to have it, the traffic light or not, um, that maybe let, let the clock start there. But, um, I do, I will tell you that, um, we started looking at what it would cost to landscape the entire parking lot, um, and we, we worked with a company before COVID, and back before COVID, it was over three million dollars. So, um, if we set a timeline and you want us to landscape this thing, there, we have to do a lot of fundraising that's going to take time. We have to develop plans, then start fundraising, that's, that's a multi-year, uh, project.
So do we need to amend this then, in order to pass it?
I would suggest that we amend both conditions. Um, on condition number twenty-one, with regard to the, um, concerns about, uh, birds, I would suggest that we change it to require Cristo Ray to have a consultation with Lake County Audubon and see if they have any suggestions. Um, if they don't, then I think it's fine, and if there is a bird incident, then we'll...
Well, I think what he's saying is just because it just says when the driving range is not in usage.
Right, understood, but we've also had a conversation with them, and I thought that this had gotten amended, and I missed it in my review, um, that they're not lowering the sports netting, it's a different kind of sports netting. We were initially under the impression that it was like, um, like what you see for a field kick in football, that it went up and then came right down. Um, that's not the case here, which we now understand. So, um, we're okay with not requiring anything if the bird specialists
Say it's okay.
Think it's okay to not require anything, and this is twenty-five feet height, high, which is similar to the building heights in that area. So it's probably not as much as, of, an obstruction as some other netting might be.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we can negotiate... So, you know, we can negotiate language that we're, that both sides are okay with, if Cristo Ray's okay with that. And then with regard to the parking lot, we know, even from our own projects, that IDOT is slower than any of us would like. Understandable, they're having staffing issues and all of that, and that's kind of a universal thing. We also understand the fundraising issue around that. So because it's an ordinance, I would like to see some dates set in there that we can check performance on.
Could we say something like six or 12 months after the light is approved?
I think we could...
Or denied, whatever ends up happening?
I would say we should do something like six months, within six months after disposition of an IDOT determination, and then up to 24, or at your discretion, 36 months to implement.
Six months to develop the plan and then start going out to donors.
How long do you think it would take to actually do the planning? Can you be planning the...
I really don't know, but, you know, I think six months is probably plenty for the planning, but, you know, a normal capital campaign would be at least three years.
Yeah, understood. Can you be planning the landscaping that isn't impacted by the entrance point ahead of time, so that part is in place regardless of which route it goes?
Yes.
So that'll be moved up within that 24-month timeline.
Yeah, that we can, kind of everything on the west, the north, and the east, we can probably figure out. It's really everything to the south that's the real issue, and that's the parking lot.
Okay, so one of the things that the council has previously done is deferred the approval to the Development Review Board, which, as you know, is a board made up of leadership of staff from multiple departments throughout the city. So if you'd be willing, and Cristo Ray would be willing to take that approach, maybe that it's, that they need to update the Development Review Board within 18 months from today's date, and thereafter at least every six months.
That sounds like a great idea.
So we'd be voting to approve it with the amendments to the two items on the CUP, and then it would go before the Development Board for following up on those items?
And then it doesn't have to come back to City Council. Development Review Board can meet more often.
But it's going to be 24 months before we get anything out of IDOT, so...
So we could make it 24 months then, though. We actually know of a surprise that came faster recently, so... Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, we would just need a motion to amend the motion in line with the amendments to conditions 21 and 22.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. First and a second. Motion to amend.
Can I just ask one more thing? So did our requirements change since they originally did their parking lot? Why now, all of a sudden, is, why wasn't this done when they did the parking lot originally? I guess that's my question.
The original CUP did have some conditions related to parking lot landscaping that there hasn't been performance on at this point, partly because of the traffic signal, though it wasn't enumerated properly in the original ordinance. But we've been aware that there's been a dialogue with IDOT and a pursuit of that traffic signal.
So this was originally applied for in April, right? And we're here now, this, considering the amount of work that's gone into this, this is really fast. I mean, this is, this is, I've seen a lot of these come through, and there's a lot of work that's gone into figuring out. So kudos to you and your team
Thank you.
for bringing this. And I'm grateful that they're bringing this project to us. I'm sure Alderman Hayes, since it's in his ward
Thrilled.
It's going to look so much better than what we had there for so long.
And it's a great amenity for the students, for sure.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a benefit to everybody. Enough said.
Okay, perfect. So we are voting on the amendment now, is that correct?
Yes, the amendment to the motion. And then, assuming that this is approved, we'll vote on the actual motion as amended.
Okay. Okay, so roll call on the amendment to the motion. We have a first and a second already.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion to amend passes. Now we're voting on the...
The amended motion.
The amended motion. Okay. Roll call, please. Oh, I need a first and a second. A first and a second. Okay. Alderwoman Florian, second from Alderwoman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Great. And thank you, thank you all, but thank you too to the staff that helped do this. I'm a very impatient guy, but thank you for pushing this through. We appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Nice job. All right. I lost my place, so give me a minute.
Aye.
All right, aye, thank you. And...
And Mr. Chairman, if I can call out, maybe you were about to say this, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
I, J, and K are all for the same project, though they're separate motions.
Okay.
And the petitioner is here.
The petitioner is here. Okay, would you like me, is there a more efficient way of handling it? So I'm going to read them all, or just address each of them?
Doesn't hurt to just read them all, and then we know what they all are.
Okay.
If there are questions.
So Agenda item A is a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2716, a variance from requirements to provide vegetative screening and buried cables for a solar voltaic installation at 2082 North Butrick Street. Item J is a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2717, a variance from fence requirements for ornamental style and prohibition of barbed wire at 2082 North Butrick Street. And Agenda item K is a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2718, a conditional use permit for a solar photovoltaic field at 2082 North Butrick Street. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
For all three? Okay, Alderwoman Florian?
Second.
Alderman Donenworth, are there any questions?
Yeah, this, I have some questions. This is in my ward.
Can we close the door back there, please? Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is in my ward, and I have some questions about it because you're asking for a variance to provide vegetative screening and buried cables for this. I don't know, what is the variance? What's the requirement, and what are we varying from?
The requirement is that they have vegetative screening, which is planted bushes or trees, and that the cables are buried. Because this is a superfund site with a landfill that has a cap, there, you can't have plants with roots other than grasses and things. You can't have trees or bushes with roots, and you can't bury cables in the landfill.
So the variance is to not do that?
Correct. It's a variance from the requirements to do those things. Same thing with the fence. We require an ornamental-style fence, and we prohibit barbed wire.
Right.
So this is to keep the fence that's already approved by US EPA and exists there now a chain link, which is not ornamental, and it does have barbed wire.
Why are we doing that?
That's the required fence by the US EPA.
Is chain link and barbed wire.
Is the existing fence, the chain link with the barbed wire. So that requires a variance from our requirement for an ornamental fence on the frontage and the prohibition on barbed wire.
Thank you. And finally, item K, and this is, this is one that's going to be problematic for me, but go ahead.
The conditional use permit?
Yeah.
So there is an existing conditional use permit on the site that was approved some years ago. We offered to extend it, but the petitioner preferred a new conditional use permit, and if you want to come and speak to it, you're welcome to come up. There was a change in the organizational structure of the entity operating it, and so changing the name and all of those things is just much cleaner, and they were willing to go through the process, and they have, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of all of these items.
So here's where I'm going with this. How large is this entire photovoltaic field? Is it the whole thing from western all the way down to Glen Flora?
It's 70 acres, is that correct, within the site?
Yeah, well...
Hi.
What's your name?
My name is Josh Burkhaw. I'm the Director of Engineering for BQ Energy. We are the developer of the Yeoman Creek Solar Project.
Okay.
Yeah, the project size itself, forgive me, I don't have the exact acreage in front of me. It's roughly 20 acres. I don't believe it's a full 70.
So if you can picture, is it from Sunset Boulevard or Gulf Road or whatever up there to the north? How far south does it go?
Basically, it goes south to the end of the landfill. So there's three landfills in that area. You know where North Butrick actually turns?
Butrick. Yes, yes, okay, got you, okay.
You can tell I'm not local, right? Yeah, where Butrick turns, that's roughly where the landfill stops, and so it basically runs the length of Butrick, and then from there, west to the creek.
Okay. West to where?
To the creek. There's a creek running north-south.
Here's my concern. There is actually a lot of wildlife over there. There's deer, coyote, there's beavers over there, and some other stuff, raccoons, possibly. There's a lot of wildlife, and my concern obviously is, I mean, I know we're an urban environment, but Waukegan is very unique in that we do have a lot of wildlife along our lakefront and other areas in the city, including this area that we're now going to develop. Has any consideration been given in planning on the impact that that's going to have? Like, because there are beaver over there in that creek, has any consideration been given to engineering to allow them to remain, or is it just like, we're just going to go bulldoze everything, close off the creek?
Oh, well, we can't close the creek, certainly. That would require years of permitting with the Army Corps of Engineers. But as part of the plans, there's actually three landfills. We're only building on one of them.
Okay.
And then there is also a large area of wetlands, which we actually purchased as part of the project that is not planned for development at all, because, again, it's a wetland, so we can go through a multi-year process with Corps of Engineers, but why would we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so there is a large amount of land that will remain, open spaces part of this. Two of it is landfills that are under the US EPA, and one of it is large wetlands.
Good enough, thank you.
Is there, is there any, like, we were talking earlier about the netting and the birds, and has there been any studies about, does solar panels affect wildlife somehow? Like, can the deer just walk around them? Can the beavers just, like, they're not going to get electrocuted, they're not going to...
No.
They're not going to start glowing?
No, they certainly won't.
Any more than they do from being in the landfill already?
Yes, no, and as you know, right, deer need like a 12-foot or higher fence to block them out, so certainly, deer will certainly be able to jump over our fence. We don't intend for that, but there's...
They could get out if they want to.
We're not going to put up a 12-foot fence, so we're not going to be able to stop them. But we do have that large wildlife area just south of the plant, and we did have to do a Threatened Endangered Species Study as part of our work with the EPA to make sure that there were no protected species on site.
Okay, cool.
Cool. Thank you.
And then one more question, and I'm sorry for sounding dumb when I ask this question, but as I was, I was reading the information we had, and it talked about selling electricity to low-income people, and so how does your company make money off of this, is what I don't understand? Like, why, what's in it for you, I guess, is I don't, I don't get that.
Gosh, well, the rate at which we sell electric power out of the plant is high enough that we make our money back, plus whatever return we need. In general, that is going to be less than the rate people are currently paying for electric energy from ComEd or whomever they're buying from.
So you're going to give, you're going to give some electricity to the school, and you're going to sell some to low-income people, but then there'll be other electricity that you'll be able to sell at market rate, basically?
Pretty much everything that we sell will be at a rate that allows us to get our return on investment, but is generally going to be less than what people are currently paying now who are buying it from us.
And then you also get tax credits for doing this, too, right?
Yes, there's tax credits, and that's, that is far more complicated than the engineering.
And you're not the numbers guy?
I'm the Director of Engineering, so I make sure the plant works.
Thank you for answering that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Call for a vote.
Okay, roll call, please.
Which one?
Oh, are we doing, are we taking all three?
Corporation Council says we can take all three, as long as the vote is the same for all three, then we'll just...
Right, if there's a consensus that...
Can we get a consensus?
Right, through the discussion, you all feel that you're going to vote similarly as to all three items, then there is no harm in voting, taking the two variances and the conditional use permit together. However, if you feel that the conditional use permit's fine, but the variance, not so much, then you should probably split it up. But from the discussion, it sounds like the variances are required by the EPA. There's specifics, rationale given behind it, so...
Sounds good. I think we can take them all at, all at once.
I agree.
So I had a motion by Alderman Florian and a second by Alderman Donenworth, is that correct?
Yes.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. All three pass. Agenda item L is a motion to adopt an ordinance creating a Class A tavern for Pete's Pub, Inc., DBA Sunset Bowl at 2015 North Lewis Avenue. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second? I'll second. First from Alderman Turner, second from Alderman Donenworth. Are there any questions to the motion?
I just wanted to point out, and I think this is only under executive content, the son's name is misspelled, I think. The last name starts with a G, right?
Yes.
And here, a couple times, his name starts with a C. I'm assuming him and his mom have the same name, so...
Goats, Goats.
Uh, yeah. So it's just a clerical thing, I'm sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Just want to comment that the Goats family has owned and operated Sunset Bowl since 1995? 97, thank you. And they have been a staple in the community, great business owners and operators, no problems, no issues up there at the bowling alley, fully, totally in support of this application.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Item M, I think, is being passed. Am I correct?
Held over, yeah.
Or held over? Okay. Brings us to...
Continued, I guess you could say.
Okay, item M is being continued. Reports and communications are being none. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it, too.
Okay, you guys got it? All right, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 7:02. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the July third City Council meeting. It is now seven-ten, and we will go ahead and begin our council meeting. I will probably try and get everybody out of here as quickly as I can tonight, because I know we're all ready to celebrate tomorrow, so we'll try and get the meeting going and do it as fast as possible for you. Can you do roll call for me, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Newsom?
Present.
Alderperson Turner?
Present.
Alderman Donanworth?
Present.
Alderperson Florian?
Present.
Alderperson Hayes?
Present.
Alderperson Bolton?
Present.
Alderperson Guzman?
Present.
Alderperson Martinez?
Present.
Alderperson Felix?
Present.
Mayor Taylor?
Present.
You have a corn, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Linda Irvin from Christian Faith Fellowship. And I have to say, we've never had a pastor look prettier, thank you.
Opportunity to come and do the invocation for you this evening. And would you like to stand? Do you all stand for this, or no?
If you want us to stand, we're more than happy to stand.
Amen. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you right now, God, for being able to come before you, oh God, in prayer. And we thank you, Lord God, for this Waukegan City Council Board, Father, for the mayor, and all the alderpeople. And we pray, Father, for the police chief, for the firemen, Father, in the name of Jesus. We pray for their families and their friends. We pray for their health, Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, that you would bless them, Father, to be able to do their jobs, God, with integrity, oh God, and making the right decision. I pray wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, oh God, of what it is that you have called them to do, to be a blessing to each other and into this community, Father, in the name of Jesus. We thank you, Father, for what you're doing, oh God, and what you're about to do, how you're blessing businesses, oh God, and families, oh God, that homes will be renovated, Father, and streets will be made new, Father, in the name of Jesus. We pray for every businessman, every businesswoman, that they will be able to thrive in this community, Father, in the name of Jesus Christ. We just give you the glory, oh God, for what you're doing. We thank you, Father, that in you we do live, move, and have our being. We thank you, Lord God, for each person that is represented here, God, that have come with questions, and they need answers, that only you can give, oh God, and we pray that you would word the mouths of those who have the answers, oh God, in the name of Jesus, that you've given to them, that they will answer with boldness, oh God, and clarity, oh God, and understanding, and empathy, Father, in the name of Jesus. And, Lord, we just come against crime, we come against violence, we come against hatred, we come against all type of things, oh God, that the enemy would come to cause a division, oh God. Even in the council room, Father, in the name of Jesus, let there be peace, Father, in the name of Jesus, where there's chaos and misunderstanding. Lord, I pray a spirit of love, oh God, in the name of Jesus, over each person that we would experience, oh God, your love, God, which covers a multitude of sins, Father, in the name of Jesus. So we just give you the glory, thank you for the weather today, that it's not raining, and we just give you the glory, oh God, that there'll be no accidents, oh God, even on the Fourth of July, Father, in the name of Jesus, that people will have a wonderful time with their family and friends, and that the food would be good, Father, in the name of Jesus, oh God, that there'll be good competition, oh God, on who can do the best barbecue. And we just thank you, God, that you're making a way that you want us to be a lively stone, a great people that can serve each other, Father, in the name of Jesus. So we thank you for these servants that are on the board, and in the name of Jesus, for every responder, oh God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you for blessing them, every paramedic, in the name of, every doctor in this community, Father, in the name of Jesus. We just give you the glory, and we give you all the honor. Father, and I also ask that you would bless those that are homeless, oh God, and those that are in the jails right now, in the name of Jesus. We pray for compassion, in the name of Jesus Christ, and for strength, Father, to be able to help those that are in need, in Jesus Christ's mighty name. I pray this prayer, and I thank you. Amen.
Please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Again, welcome, everybody, to the City Council meeting. Before we begin, I'm going to introduce you to a new member of my family that some of you have seen here today. She's just come into my life today. So I'd like you all to meet Lucy. Lucy is a soon-to-be four-month-old Haverniece. Like I said, she's been in my office today, and I just wanted everybody to meet her. She is my fourth dog, and like I said, she was here just for a visit today.
Bye, Lucy. Gimme that dog.
I have to say, she's one of the calmest dogs I've ever had. So while yesterday was a little bit of a disappointment, because we weren't able to have our Fourth of July parade, Waukegan still has a lot of big summer events taking place this week, including the Fourth of July fireworks, Scoop the Loop on Friday and Saturday, well, I'm sorry, it's Scoop, not Scoop the Loop, on Friday and Saturday, and the Summer Dance Showcase at Jack Benny Center for the Arts this weekend. More information can be found at waukeganil.gov. Other live outdoor events continue this summer, including Waukegan Band at Steiner Pavilion, summer courtyard concerts at the library, chilling and grilling at Bonnybrook, and the farmer's market at the harbor, and yoga at the beach. The Glen Rock Culvert Replacement Project starts this Wednesday and will require a complete road closure between Glen Rock and Lincoln and Chapel until September. The detour uses Washington Street. The River Road Project also starts on Wednesday, and you'll see the installation of a new water main, roadway improvements. Traffic flow will be disrupted with a complete closure near the S-curve planned for the weekend of July fifteenth and sixteenth. The EPA is looking for public comments concerning the Coal Ash Ponds and NRG as a follow-up to last week's public meeting. Comments must be submitted in writing, either online or by mail, before August fourth. To submit the comments, go to wwwregulations.gov, or enter EPA-HQ-OLEM 2023/0209 into the search field. More information about events, the road projects, and the EPA public comment may be found on our website at waukeganil.gov. As most of you have seen, our signs in the city, fireworks are otherwise illegal in the state of Illinois and our city. I encourage everyone to have a safe Fourth of July and come down to the lakefront to see professional fireworks. I want to say that the fireworks, certain areas have been bad, but for the most part, our fireworks in the city have been less this year than in previous years. Knock on wood, I don't wanna say that too loud for fear that it might change, but it has been better over the last month so far. Lastly, as many of you know, I was under the weather during the last City Council meeting and couldn't attend, but I did watch the livestream. Frankly, it was disappointing to see our elected officials disrespect each other, which sends the wrong message to our community, especially our young people. Furthermore, I want to remind everyone here this evening about our rules of decorum. You will be removed from this meeting if you are out of order. As I have said, from day one as mayor, we will treat each other with the dignity and respect at all times, even when we disagree with each other. But it is not an image that is good for our city to see, talking to each other with disrespect and just outright talking over each other. So that will be a little different this evening. But that concludes my mayor's comments, and again, please have a safe Fourth of July. Thank you. Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Can I have a first and a second for a resolution for Item A?
I'll make the first.
Alderman Turner, second. Alderman Newsom. A Resolution 23R-191 honoring the life of Mary Blair Moore. Did you wanna read that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Resolution 23R-191 honoring the life of Mary Blair Moore. Whereas Mary Blair Moore was born on July first, nineteen forty-two, to Mary Anna Jack Blair, and passed away peacefully on June eleventh, when her earthly body could no longer keep pace with her spirit. And whereas Mary Blair Moore lived her life as large as her heart, and the legacy she leaves as a mother, grand, and great-grandmother, mentor, educator, and advocate of anyone in need is immeasurable. And whereas she was a devoted mother and community servant in both her born town of Wichita Falls and her other hometown of Waukegan, where she worked tirelessly on behalf of those who had no voice. Using any influence to gain, she gained to open a door and hold it open, to create a pathway for others. And whereas Mary Blair Moore was an avid reader with an extensive library and a lifelong learner fueled by the challenge of gaining knowledge for herself and sharing, especially with young people. And whereas Mary Blair Moore retired from civil service in two thousand from North Chicago Veterans Administration Medical Center and Provena St. Therese Medical Center, and retired in 2022 from Waukegan School District sixty, having found years of personal satisfaction as a substitute teacher. And whereas Mary Blair Moore contributed heavily to crafting the civil service and use of force policies for the city of Waukegan as part of the Citizens for Progress Committee. And whereas, in her seventies, Mary Blair Moore completed the Waukegan Citizens Police Academy and Community Emergency Response Team programs, and had served as an election judge for over twenty-five years. And whereas she earned a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education degree from Southern Illinois University in Healthcare Management and Workforce Education and Development. And whereas, the last of her five siblings to transition to their heavenly home, she leaves to cherish her memory daughter Jacqueline Green, Jacqueline Green, and son Sanders Moore III, as well as extended family and friends. And now therefore be resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby honor the life of Mary Blair Moore for her service to our community. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the family of Mary Blair Moore on the twenty-fourth day of June, 2023, and then read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council meeting on the third day of July, 2023, dated this third day of July, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For those of you who knew Mary, she was very involved in the community. She was just a ray of sunshine, and she will be drastically missed in our community. I don't know of another lady that I can tell you showed more class and dignity than the way she represented herself. So, again, it's a great loss to our community. Moving on to the proclamation. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, we did the first and second, can I have roll call, please?
Alderperson Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donanworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, proclamation, July is National BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month. Item B, proclamation, July is National BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month. BIPOC is how they abbreviate it. Madam Clerk, would you read that for us?
Certainly. July is National BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas July is BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month, formerly known as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas BIPOC experienced unique struggles and generational trauma from racial oppression leading to specific mental health needs. And whereas research shows that racism is associated with stress and poor mental health, and both have lasting physical effects, including daily detriments to blood pressure, sleep quality, increased headaches, and more. And whereas BIPOC disproportionately experienced disability resulting from mental disorders. And whereas several barriers prevent BIPOC from receiving adequate mental health care, and these may include cultural and language differences, socio-economic disparities, stigma, immigration status, and providers' cultural incompetency or bias. And whereas recognizing the signs and symptoms and impact of trauma and mental health issues allows for more directly sharing of strategies, programs, and resources tailored to racial and ethnic minority populations. And whereas, the importance of directing BIPOC to available resources to engage in healing, self-care, community care, and proper coping with mental illness cannot be overstated. And whereas Waukegan and its resource partners are committed to identifying and eliminating the barriers that prevent marginalized individuals and communities within our city from accessing services, healing opportunities, and health-related advancements that would benefit individuals and families. And whereas, the goals for National BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month are to broadly reduce and eliminate disparities in behavioral and mental health by improving access to quality services and supports that enable individuals and families to thrive, participate in, and contribute to healthy communities. And now therefore be resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim July twenty twenty-three as National BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge all members of the community to become better educated on racial disparity related to health services, and raise awareness of the unique mental health struggles from racial oppression, adopted this July twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, it is audience time. Yes, it is. And we have a list tonight. You have three minutes, and I'm going to call and have you proceed to the east side of the room. I'm going to call the first five. Anna Giles. Adam Hirschata. Thank you. Yvonne. I'm sorry, can't read this. Yvonne. Yvonne.
Yvonne DeFoltin.
Thank you. Rayon Edwards and Cassidy Charity. Ms. Anna, go right ahead.
So my name is Anna Giles, and I emailed Mayor Taylor and have not received a reply from her, so I'm here to ask her a second time for a peaceful resolution and to make others aware of the discrimination and misuse of federal funds or taxpayer money that goes through the city of Waukegan's Community Development Block Grant Program. I was refused equal fair access, and here is my story. I'm a struggling, single-income, first-time homeowner overcome with health hazardous home repairs. My house was built in the nineteen thirties, and some of the repairs I needed help with were the leaking roof or chimney, the main sewer line pipe breaking, and most of my windows are not functioning, and mold in my basement. In February of twenty twenty-two, a contractor, Greg, was supposed to install a brand-new roof, gutters, water heater, and exterior doors, but shortly after, I had to contact the city because the doors were not installed properly, and there was no insulation, and cold air was still coming in through the doors. Most importantly, a few months later, water was still leaking into my roof from my attic, and the city said that they could not help me unless I had proof. I had to wait until it rained again to get a video of visible water droplets. I was pregnant at the time and couldn't climb into the attic. My fiance was finally able to get a video, and they came to look at the attic to finally determine that there was water coming in through the chimney. Apparently, they did not install the shingles correctly around the chimney, and the chimney also needed to be repaired. That's already two occurrences of water coming in from a brand-new roof. In June of twenty twenty-two, after repairing the chimney during a big storm, there was a third occurrence of water coming in. A fourth time, I was able to get a video in July to prove that the water was still getting in, and in September of twenty twenty-two, Greg came to repair the chimney flashing. Then in November of twenty twenty-two, I had my baby, and it was difficult for me to take care of anything as I was recovering from my C-section. We experienced several leaks from the melting snow, and I was able to make an insurance claim for the water damage in December of twenty twenty-two. The fifth time, water came in through my new roof. The insurance adjuster also mentioned that there was some flashing missing where they put caulking instead of the flashing needed. This was communicated to Mr. Garcia from the city, but nothing was done without a video. In April of this year, we got another big storm, and a lot of water came in, which was the sixth occurrence. We were able to get the video of the water dripping, and I sent an email to Ms. Garland, who is the director, about my concerns and this ongoing problem, but she never responded. I called Mr. Garcia, who was able to get Greg to come over to fix the issue, and Greg came, and in fifteen minutes was gone. At this point, I asked Mr. Garcia what number I was on the substantial waiting list, and he said I would have to call the office manager to find out. Ms. Garland called me back on May twenty-second to talk down to me and let me know that they were done with me, and I do not qualify for the substantial list since I received my two emergency repairs. I feel like Ms. Garland is discriminating and retaliating against me because I asked too many questions and requested information in writing, and expected quality work for the price I and our government are paying. Seven occurrences have occurred that water has been coming in through my roof still. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anna Hirschata. I'm just finishing the rest of her grievance to the city. There are interactions with the city contractors. Some negative comments were made about me being a stay-at-home parent, and how if I had all this free time, I should be able to do these jobs myself. They would not allow me to be present during conversations to help Anna decide or figure out if these repairs were done properly. They, as a woman of sole provider of our family, Anna lacks the confidence and experience and knowledge to understand how professional roof repairs should be done. I was not allowed to help at all. Anna asked questions with me present, and they said that I had to not be there. I was the only one that could actually monitor the contractors, as most of the jobs were done while she was at work, and I was at home taking care of the children. One of the things that I saw worse was one of the companies pulled out a cooler and started drinking in my front lawn. As I told them what they were doing, they looked at me like if I was crazy for complaining about the beer. All of these issues were brought up, and they were just blown off as saying, at least you're going to get these jobs done for free. And my reply was, they're really not free. We signed a contract, and we are responsible for paying this money back because there is a lien on our home. And Anna looked online and through all the paperwork, and she could not receive, she could not receive any more of the repairs. Mr. Garcia said that they split them up because the bids under request were not taken by one company all at once. My question is, so why can't her home receive the full amount of help? Isn't this why this program exists? She was hoping that the city would help her so that she could stay here in this lovely city and have her children be also a part of it. She feels like our government does not want to help families like ours. Please, for the love of God and this great country, complete and honor an investigation on our case in our ward, as many other women in our low-income community of color are probably experiencing housing discrimination as well. Why are surveys not being given to homeowners? Or how are these contractors getting these jobs and are bedded before they appear to someone's property? The worst one that I had is they came to fix a water boiler, and the gentleman that was going to fix it was completely drunk. He almost stumbled on my basement stairs, and I felt super uncomfortable telling him he had to leave, that I could not let my children see him like this. They came back with someone else, and when I told the guy, you know, he was really drunk, he said, well, I kind of didn't even see him. And so I didn't argue with the man, but I felt like if my children witnessed this man fall down the stairs, what was I going to explain to them? That you could drink in your jobs, professional? That is all for tonight. Thank you so much for listening. Take a good night.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Yvonne De.
Yvonne DeFoltin. Hello, I'm City Council and community members. I had an event last week, and it's fitting that it's BIPOC Month. We called A Rose That Grew Out of Concrete to Shine a Light on Trauma. I want to personally thank Alderman Turner for showing up. We had a range of eighteen to twenty-seven-year-olds on our panel. They were my former students when I was principal at Waukegan Brookside from several years, all who experienced trauma, whether they were straight-A students or struggled academically. We had made sure we had a variety number of students. Actually, one of the former students, my students and panelists, will be the backup singer to Dr. Charles Jenkins at the Gospel on the Beach this coming weekend. In the many years of community work in my hometown of Rock Island, Illinois, and now here for fifteen years in Waukegan and in education, I try to encourage students and young adults to keep going and show up for yourself, even when your family and your friends and supporters don't show up. Some of the young adults on the panel that I know, their trauma's intimately, people didn't show up for them through their school-age years, but I tried to encourage them to keep going while being consistent and showing up for them. Most people will only show up when there's cameras, news outlets, or it's going to be a sold-out arena. But I try to preach to them to keep showing up. By that time, the damage is already done, hence trauma. I let them know in real time last week, even for me, Ms. Fulton, like they call me, there are people who I support that didn't show up this week for me, but as long as I show up for myself and God has me, that's all that matters. I have to lead by example. The people who showed up were supposed to be there. We had people come from Chicago, we had people, young adults, come from universities and colleges that came that I didn't even know, and donated to a city that they don't even live in. Those are the, I had, we had a few major sponsorships, but most money came from regular, ordinary people. Those are people you do it for. When no one's looking, in the words of Deion Sanders, no one showed up at his high school games, but if no one else got me, I got me. And that's how you become that rose that grew from concrete. Thank you again to Alderman Turner. The middle-aged school students and high school students are the ones usually forgotten, and we wonder why they end up in the street. Here is, you just, here's a small token of my appreciation I'm giving you. It's my Save a Light, Shine a Light on Trauma line. Demontre, Jose, Thomas, Patrick, Loria, Joanna, Christine, Zaire, and Bethany, we all appreciate you for coming. All the monies raised will be donated to five organizations that work with the tri-city area.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Ms. Kathy Charity.
Hello, Mayor Alderman. I'm just going to speak off the cuff on a few things that's going around in this changed, so-called city called Waukegan. First of all, a lot of us are suffering for the lack of knowledge. We celebrate Juneteenth all the time, which I used to. I'm just as guilty till I found out exactly what it meant. In eighteen sixty-five, General Gordon Granger, he passed a general order, number three, in Texas to free the slaves. Okay. He freed the slaves, but a lot of people didn't know what his purpose really was regarding the children. Do your research, you'll find out. I don't celebrate Juneteenth because it was more to just party and saying that we free slaves or whatever. He did a lot to the children when it came to trafficking. Do your research. Again, moving on. Gun violence. Gun violence in Waukegan has really gone crazy. Speeding, these little teeny cars with these little kits, these little zoom, 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 sound like bumblebees running up and down the streets. They have to go. American place. Last year, my grandson applied for a job, okay? Educated. Guess what it says? Spanish preferred or bilingual. Last, I thought it was United States of America, okay? Another thing. Interpretation. We need sign language interpreters. Brother Blank say we don't, we face this way, the one can see. A lot of sign language people could read lips. My grandson is deaf apart of hearing. What's the purpose? He don't know what's going on, because first of all, everybody have sign language interpreters, even Prisker, everybody. So why don't we open up a little job description for somebody who can do that part-time to help him out as well? I'm sick and tired of people coming up saying black and brown people. Black is a color, brown is a color. What you mean, black and brown people? We're all one nation under God. Second of all, we all have different cultures. You don't have to be African-American, you be black as this pole here. Number one. Number two, I just want to say that our businesses here for African-Americans, Americans period, other businesses are up on the rise. Tenth Street is totally still an eyesore, my Alderman. People congregating, it looks just like a war zone. It's terrible. You know, I sit and I watch at home with war in these council meetings. What are we going to do? It's a bigger picture to see next year, okay? It's a bigger picture next year, because right now, we are in a recession. And if you do your homework and you do your research, you understand what's actually what's going on. This is a spiritual war. Now, a lot of us may sound like we crazy, we're not. It's a lot going on a lot of people don't even know about, and I rest my case.
Thank you, Ms. Charity. Mr. Rayon.
Excuse me, point of order, if I may. Several people remarked to me about the camera not showing the audience member who was speaking, and I've talked about this before. Could we please direct the camera show members of the audience who are speaking to the council? I think it's an open meeting, public meeting, and they should be seen.
I don't know if they can do that, because the camera might not be set up that way, but by ordinance, all they have to be is heard. They don't have to necessarily be seen. But they might be able to move it. I don't know, I don't control the camera, so I don't know.
Dear Lord. This is ridiculous. Please, sir, thank you.
Good evening, council. The bear of bad news this evening. I want to say to this couple here, I'm sorry you guys are going through what you're going through with your house, but let there be no mistake about it, these directors of these departments don't run no show. Their chief of staff and their mayor, they run the show. They submit the right things, they do the right things, but they're the bosses. They do what they want to do. I wanted to share that with y'all. And I want to talk about tonight, when we're talking about community and kids, this city did a contract with the Atmile Foundation, and that's cronyism, neptism. Your chief of staff is on his board. That is disgusting, and it got to stop. So I went and did some research and stuff like that, and the contract is up to sixty thousand dollars, but every time we do Event for Kids, y'all overlook us. Now, I want to know how much he's getting paid to run this show, because we got money being dumped in these communities to all these CBOs, and ain't nobody doing nothing. So I want somebody to tell me, and please, please do not tell me it was Mr. Garland, the Public Works Department Director, because he don't print agendas. Why do I have minors' kids' names and their date of birth on a city website? Why? Why? Do y'all know what people can do with a name and a date of birth? We are tarnishing them kids' lives already, and they ain't even got started. That is disgusting. And you mean to tell me nobody knew a lot of you Aldemans called me? And I told y'all. So I know it got back to the city, and still nothing is being done. So I'm going to say something here publicly that I haven't said. I worked my tail off of you, Ann Taylor. I did, when you was running for this office, because we want to do something different. We want to make the city of Waukegan better, because we said Sam did all of these horrible things. Well, you neck and neck with him now, honey. You've made it. You've reached it. You have, and it's disgusting, even for me to get up here to say, because I still get beat up about, from my community for supporting you, and this has been a total disappointment. I like to call it a shit show. So I've talked to some of these babies already, and they have been connected with an attorney, because this is illegal, and y'all need to clean it up. But this is what happens when we rush to do things, when we try to be slick on doing things, because this contract that y'all created, you damn sure didn't tell the public about it. You didn't make it accessible for everybody, and that's where it's wrong at. And I know why it was done, and the only reason why it was done, and it got to stop. Until you knew Aldemans taking a picture with the mayor all the time, that's not a good look for the community. Stop it, y'all. We got y'all here to take care of business, not to play politics.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The next three will be Preston Kendall, James Swanson, Elizabeth Mavera, and Viviana Azate. The next three will be Preston Kendall, James Swanson, Elizabeth Marero, and Viviana Arzate. Preston Kendall? James Swanson?
Stevenson.
Stevenson?
Mr. Kendall and I signed up just in the event that there were any questions related to item M. We were told that we couldn't speak or respond to the council unless we'd signed up. That's the only reason we put our names on the list for item M, which comes up later in the agenda.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Marrero, and I am a volunteer with Fiesta's Patrias, which is a non-for-profit organization in Waukegan. I am here tonight to request transparency with the special event application process, more specifically with the application of the Latino Parade and Festival, which every year it occurs during the month of September. Prior coming here today, I spoke with a city official via phone, who informed me that only registered non-for-profit applicants are given the permit to do the parade, and assured me the applicants are screened by the team. Last month, City of Waukegan posted on Facebook that Puro Football Newspaper is doing the parade. When you look at the application, I noticed a couple of rec flags. Number one, the organization name. The applicant wrote just Puro Football. I couldn't find Puro Football or Puro Football Newspaper listed as a registered business in the state of Illinois website. I can only find a soccer league, which is a non-for-profit. It's not a business. Newspaper is totally different than a soccer league. Number two, the address. The applicant wrote thirteen North Genesee Street, Waukegan. That's a different address. It's not Puro Football Newspaper address. Number three, unquestioned, is their sponsoring organization registered with the Secretary of State? The applicant wrote no. Number four, unquestioned, is the sponsoring organization a licensed non-for-profit? The applicant put no. Now, on the City of Waukegan Code, Section fifteen, one eighty-two, denial or revocation, the mayor or the mayor's destiny may deny a special permit if the applicant makes or permits the making of a false or misleading statement. Now, I believe this is a misleading statement because it brought more questions, and I'm more confused. I'm thinking if I cannot find Puro Football Newspaper registered in the state website, is that person paying taxes? I don't know. Now, as a taxpayer of the City of Waukegan, I expect the city to work with individuals or organizations that are in good standing with the state and are doing the right thing. Aldermen's, as elected officials, it is your duty to represent and look after the community of Waukegan in this situation, the Latino community. I'm asking each one of you to look into this matter, research those discrepancies that were found, and provide transparency to the Latino community. The special event was given to the applicant that is not charging the community extremely higher fees that our people cannot afford. It seems that we're forgetting the purpose of this event. This is a cultural heritage and traditional event, not a money-making machine. Thank you.
I am Viviana Arzate, the reina Fiesta's Patrias, queen of the patriotic parties, which is the celebration of the historical events that led to the independence of each of the Hispanic and Latin countries. I represent the fight, courage, and resilience that my people had and still have to advocate for themselves and those who are too afraid to come forward. So today, I take that fight, courage, and resilience to come forward, to speak with you. The last time I was here, I thanked and recognized the black and brown council members for being a representation of the people in the community, for being our voices, the voices of the fifty-nine percent Latinos in Waukegan, the nineteen percent black and African-Americans, according to the National Center for Education Statistics. I ask that those very council members step up and forward to be the voices of the community. I ask that you reconsider our appeal to have the parade be organized by the Fiesta's Patrias Committee and volunteer and sponsors, all of which are from here, live here, and do their part in the community. It would be an injustice to have Puro Football be the organizers. It was us who held it last year. It was us who worked something up last minute for the people of Waukegan and the surrounding towns so that we can celebrate the culture and freedom, so that we can celebrate our history. The irony is that tomorrow is American Independence Day, where these same people are celebrating the other side of them, their American side, celebrating freedom and independence. But in a few months from now, they can't celebrate with people who actually care for the community and do their part to provide items for the families that lack certain resources. Fiesta's Patrias is a non-for-profit organization registered in Waukegan. What we do, we do from our hearts. We give our time. We get no monetary value. The only value we receive is that what we made, is that we made a difference in our community with the little bit that we have. It is our sponsors who helped us and helped the community, expecting nothing in return. Puro Football is overly charging those who wish to participate in the parade. Small businesses love to promote themselves any way that they can and celebrate their culture, but it would be unfair to charge so much to those in the community. This parade is not about money, although for some people it may be. For us, for the people, it is about our culture and celebrating who we are and what we have overcome. So I ask again that you reconsider the appeal so that it is for the people and by the people of Waukegan. Let it be about culture and celebration and not about money, because money is what Waukegan already lacks.
Thank you, ma'am. The next three speakers will be Uriel Varela, Margaret Carrasco, and Anthony McIntyre.
Good evening to everybody. Like you guys see, I don't have anything written down because I just come from work and just find out what's going on with the parade, the Mexican parade. And I am a member of nonprofit organization, this Fiesta's Patrias. And I believe, me and Mrs. Ann, we were talking a few weeks ago about, or a month and a half ago, about we getting it ourselves to do it because we've been doing it since like two or three years before. So and I think we've been doing it better and better every time. And now, what I see, I was watching the Facebook news and all the stuff, and I was looking at Mrs. Mayor's, and it's doing a commercial to a businessman who's not nonprofit. He's just doing his business. Because you guys see it, and the Facebook, the prices, what they put it, it's like a thousand, five hundred, six hundred, and I think it's not business about, it's about culture. And I think we've been doing better job, not doing business, because we don't even get money from anybody. So if there's any expenses, what we have to do, we do it from our package. We not asking to anybody to help us. So and I think, instead to be doing commercials to a football, the mayor, she should be doing something else like watching, you know, like, it's been so much gun members outside, shooting to Spanish people, to a black people community, and instead to get together with the black people and, you know, try to fix those things and doing commercials to somebody else who's doing business, I think it's wrong. I mean, I believe in good things and bad things, but I don't believe in all the kids getting shooting in Waukegan. Two years ago, three years ago, it wasn't like that. Now it's getting worse and worse. So I don't know if the black community and the Spanish community getting together with the mayor, trying to find out what we can do about it, instead to doing commercials. I don't think commercials is right. She should be taking care of, you know, the people who lives in Waukegan. And I think we pay taxes to Waukegan, so we should be, get allow our nonprofit organizations to do something for our people, for people who, families who they pay taxes to Waukegan, not trying to help somebody else who's making money, who's planning to get like over fifty to eighty thousand dollars in a parade. I don't think it's right. We don't even do that much money. So that's all I can say. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Ms. Margaret?
Good evening. My words tonight are directed to item number four, letter D, vendor payments. Let me begin. Tonight, I brought with me a copy of Mayor Taylor's parade selection, Gurnee Amigo, owner of the Puro Football Newspaper. And on page four is a huge picture of the mayor. We're not stupid. We know what this is. This is a political ad, okay? This is corruption. Because our tax dollars should not be having to pay this. So therefore, tonight, I'm asking all the Aldermen to do what you were voted in to office to do, to make a motion to not pay for any and all payments for Puro Football Newspaper. If she wants political ads, that's fine, but not with our money. Next. Asking, I think everyone got in the mail and also email, our appeal, okay, for the parade. I'm asking a Alderman to override, to make the motion to override the mayor's selection of our outer towners from Gurnee, Round Lake, and Chicago, the selection for doing the parade this year, and return it back to Waukegan residents. It is not a business. It is a cultural tradition and celebration. Next. Everybody better wake up. History repeats itself. Remember years ago, when the pilgrims came over from England, and that's really important, And the slaves, former slaves, had little money to afford such fines, so the white businessmen forced emancipated slaves to take on debts in exchange for paying them. These former slaves had a bond over them, and employers exploited them so that the debt could never be repaid. Well, the reality is, here in Waukegan, with ninety percent minorities, our mayor is doing a sophisticated form of discrimination and racism, putting these fines, or like us to six thousand dollar overcharge, to prevent us, okay, from moving forward. That's illegal. And lastly, I got to get this in. Mayor, you promised us no corruption, professionalism, education. Well, according to the River Road residents, they said to ask you tonight, mayor, let's see how professional and qualified you are. Do you yourself have a master's degree?
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
A university degree? Or just a high school diploma and a dental tech?
Mr. Anthony McIntyre?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to address a point. We are in receipt, the Corporation Council's office is in receipt of the denial by Ms. Carrasco, and pursuant to our code, there is an appeal process. That is something that we are internally coordinating.
Mr. Anthony McIntyre? Please go ahead. Yes, okay.
I mean, y'all just do what you want, right?
No, Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, because you're not supposed to go back.
You're next, Mr. McLamore. Mr. McIntyre, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Anthony McIntyre, founder and CEO of the Antmael Foundation. The Antmael Foundation, as many of you know, many of you have heard, we have a program called Operation Radiance. It is designed to take sixteen- to twenty-four-year-old young people and put them to work while working. They obviously are not doing other things that they could be doing, which are not productive, which are not positive. This program is intended to be a distraction away from bad behavior. We talk a lot about the violence that's going on in the community right now. We are addressing that with this program. I am, I have no problem with saying that I am very appreciative to the City of Waukegan for having this program. Now, that said, the program has to work properly. It has to function properly. I don't know many people that are more protective of these young people than me, and the way this thing has happened here recently, where the information from these students were put on the website, I don't approve of it, it's not okay. It had nothing to do with the Antmael Foundation. I'm going to defend this organization to the letter. I've spoken with our general counsel to find out what legalities that we have in place. We've sent out letters to the parents of the young people affected. It shouldn't have happened. What I will say is that Mr. Garland, who's in charge of the Public Works Department, is the last person that anybody's going to be able to point fingers at. The guy's been amazing for us to work with. He does exactly what he's supposed to do, and he has no problem with pushing us to do what we need to do as well. Wherever the mistake was made, it wasn't with the Antmael Foundation, and it was not with Mr. Garland. I want to make that perfectly clear to everybody who can hear it. We're going to continue to do our work. We're not going to allow for any comments, anything to stop us from doing what we're doing because we are doing our part, but we're only doing our part. We don't have all of the answers. We're not trying to save everybody, but those what started as ten and now are close to forty young people who are working with us, I'm proud of the fact that they're doing what they're doing over there, taking financial literacy classes, learning all about finances, getting used to being in the workforce, so that when they do get in the workforce, guess what? They're going to stay because we're training them for that right now. That is positive and productive, and no one is able to, with a straight face, say that that's anything other than that. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clyde McLamore?
Please don't interrupt me. One of the funniest thing, my name is Clyde McLamore, founder and executive director of Black Lives Matter. One of the funniest things I ever seen was when I read Mayor Ann Taylor wrote a letter to get the Chicago Bears here in the Waukegan Lakefront. Mayor, on your campaign trail, you said you're not a politician. Actually, you're not. You're a con artist. Isn't it true you fought against previous mayors for finally cleaning up the lakefront? Now you have created another one hundred thousand dollar a year job for one of your campaign supporters to work on the beach? While you was against the lakefront cleanup, we can see that you are using it in this fake Bears letter to try to get re-elected. You know that the city, nor surrounding ones like Lake Forest, Killenworth, or Weneka, don't have the roads, highway, nor infrastructure to support Soldier Field, sixty-one thousand fans, and cars. Imagine on a Sunday, at the inner church, people trying to get home to start their Sunday dinner, and you can't imagine the tailgate parties. Those white folks was, wait a minute, what do you think, what you going to try to do? Put a city ordinance, no tailgating? Those white folks will slaughter you. Chicago Bears plays Green Bay Packers, and the City of Waukegan has an ordinance with no tailgating. What would, that would make, you would make world news, and it won't be good. But you float that bullshit out there in the campaign stunt to make it look like you actually doing something for the city and fighting for the citizen. You're actually scared of the residents of Waukegan. That's why it's a rope up there. I saw you at the peace march at the Boys' and Girls' Club, and I watched how you were scared, and you had a police escort get you away from the residents. Well, since you been mayor, you fought against the residents, you look down to the residents, you lie every chance you get. You a Libertyville wannabe, a fake, a liar, a fraud. It's time for you, it's time for your fake rich butt to hit the road, Jack.
All right, there's one more speaker, and that would be me. Hold on. Let me get my timer.
They want to mess with her pay, but we giving out sixty dollars in our contracts.
Let me get my timer. Janet Kilkelly, city clerk, here to address Agenda Item six A, amending and restating ordinance. Department head versus elected official, can they be one and the same? Alderman Florian, here's a bit of education regarding the distinction, which you may not be familiar with since you are a private sector sole proprietor and publicly merely an elected legislator. A position can be both, a full-time administrator, department head, and an elected official. Local... Local full-time elected officials also serving as department heads are the mayor, the city clerk, the county clerk, the secret court clerk, the sheriff, Lake County State's Attorney, and on and on. You, as an alderperson, are considered an elected legislator, part-time with full-time benefits, but not a full-time administrator or department head. What duties are associated with a department head? They hire, fire, create budgets, maintain and enforce all citywide standards regarding policies and procedures. They advocate for their employees to advance themselves as well as ensure that developmental opportunities and professional prospects are available to their employees. In addition, the department head does annual performance reviews of their employees. All of these duties of department head, I perform and have done since taking office in two thousand and seventeen. Plus, as an elected official, I am accountable to the constituents who I serve every day. Again, let me reiterate, this salary does not benefit me in any way. It is for the next term, for whoever occupies this office. It is respect for the office of city clerk. This city clerk position is both a full-time administrator and department head for the city of Waukegan that also happens to be elected. Elected official Ann Taylor, by declining to advocate for the mayor's office compensation, places no value or worth on the mayor's salary to the detriment of our community. The lack of advocacy of the current mayor for the office of mayor relegates the salaries of all elected officials to the political spectrum rather than city policy as it should be. The recent negotiation between the city-appointed library board and library employees' union is a great example of removing an issue from the political spectrum to a solution agreeable to all. Congratulations to them. Now, this motion should be tabled and I challenge you to do so. Then revisit when you have more experience. In the meantime, request and commission a salary survey. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes, concludes audience time. Number four, Consent Agenda. Items A through D. Uh, can I have a motion to hear all of them? Um, I need a first and a second.
Can we pull out D?
Please.
Can we pull up A?
Okay. So now that asked for a table, doesn't a table require a date?
What table? Table what?
Oh, okay. Just pull it out, okay. Okay. Oh, you're talking about item D under consent. Okay, sorry. Okay. Okay, um, items A through C, can I have a first?
Excuse me, Mayor. Also pull out A.
You want item A under the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Items B and C, can we hear those? Can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Okay, a second. Okay. Uh, Florian and Hayes. Um, item A, let's hear that. Um, will, I need a first for it and a second and then I'll bring it to a question, okay? I need a first and a second for item A.
No motion.
Okay, Alderman Felix, second.
Second, Martinez.
Did you hear that, Madam Clerk? Are you gonna do the motions for the consent?
Shouldn't we vote on B and C first?
Okay, let's do B and C first. Okay, so we're doing, can I still have Alderman Felix and Alderman Martinez for B and C? Okay. Motion, um, to approve the regular payroll dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three in the total amount of one million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents. Item C, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD, HPP, uh, and CT cash out final payouts, uniform allowance dated June thirtieth, twenty-three in the total amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Uh, who's the person second on that? Uh, Felix and Martinez. I thought it had Florian and Hayes. Um, you're correct. It's Florian and Hayes on those. Okay. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A, now can I have a first and a second and then I'll bring it to question? Um, I need a first. Can I go with Alderman Felix again?
No motion.
And a second by Alderman Martinez?
Yes.
Alderman Bolton, question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, I just wanted the minister to reflect, I, because I was ill out and I attended remotely, I lost track, uh, in reference to the contract for Brad and I meant to vote ye- no when I voted yes. So I just wanted the minister to reflect that correction.
She's, uh, making a, um, clarification to the minutes. Uh, the, uh...
I think the minutes are accurately stated though, right?
Yeah, because you can't change the vote afterwards.
Not changing the vote, but the minister can reflect.
Right, so I'm, I am, uh, I did speak with Alderman Bolton prior to this. Alderman Hayes, you're correct. What was, uh, said, the manner of the vote was the manner of the vote. Uh, she's just making a clarification um, as to what was meant. That doesn't change the, uh, substance of the amendment. And so we thought it would be proper to pull this out from the consent agenda to allow her to make that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel.
Okay. Um, that being said, can I have a roll call, please? Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D, um, can I have a first and a second and then I'll bring it to question? The first and a second for item D?
No motion.
I'll second. Okay, who was the first?
Not me.
Alderman Felix.
I thought you said it.
Nope.
Alderman Felix and second was, um, Florian. Okay, question. Was that Alderman Turner that had the question?
Nope.
Who was the question?
It was me.
Okay.
Um, I, I just like, I, you know, I go through this, um, printout pretty, um, diligently, thoroughly. The finance department can attest to that. Um, and I ask questions about it every week. And, um, one of, I did not question this, but I just wanted to bring this up. Um, there was a check written, um, for seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents for badges for the new alderpersons. And, um, I just want to, um, point out that when I got my badge back when I first got elected, I paid for it out of my stipend. And so I encourage the new aldermen to consider, um, it's kind of a, you know, a little bonus, I guess we get of having these badges so that if we show up at a incident in our ward and need to prove who we are, we have these, these, um, you know, forms of identification, I guess you can say. Um, but I just don't think the taxpayers should necessarily bear the price of those. So I just wanted to encourage my alder, my fellow aldermen, um, to consider paying for them out of their stipends, which you can do by just questioning the, the finance department and they'll make that happen. So that's all I had.
Good. I do have a question about another line item, although I don't have the list. I'm sorry, are you, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay. So I do wanna question, uh, the line item referenced, I think Mrs. Carrasco mentioned about paying for an ad in the Foot, Puro Football Newspaper?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. What those ads are paid for is that is paid by planning and zoning, um, I believe. Um, I guess, um, Director, um, Noel will come up here and explain. That is played by, paid by planning and zoning because we have to advertise um, in Spanish newspapers along with, um, English newspapers. You wanna clarify?
There is a state statute, um, since January of last year that any notice that's a public notice, a legal, legally required public notice under the statute in a community such as Waukegan where there's, um, a large, a large portion of the population that speaks another language, there must be publication in the language that is the other dominant language in the community. So Planning and Zoning publishes for each of our Planning and Zoning Commission items in both the New Sun and Puro Football Newspaper. So we often have ads, probably every bill run, if not every other bill run, at least monthly, that we're paying for ads. Uh, they typically run sixty-five to ninety dollars depending on how long the text is, but those are aggregated into one payment with any other. As I understand it, and finance can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's one check issued to each vendor, um, typically for all payments that are made together. So we may have, you know, three payments of sixty dollars and you'll see one check for a hundred and eighty dollars, for example.
So what the, the nature of the ad is, I mean, you got, what is the, first of all, it looks like it's not in Spanish, it's in English. We're placing a, an English.
But we didn't pay for that.
English ad in a Spanish paper.
Alderman Turner, that is not an ad by Pu- by Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission, or Planning and Zoning Department on behalf of the commission publishes a legal notice.
Okay.
And we do it frequently. For every zoning calendar number that you see on your agendas, there has been a publication in both English and Spanish. And if you look at the attachments, we post the, the text of both of them, English and Spanish on Word docs.
Thank you, thank you.
It's not, it's not an ad. We never paid for that. I've never seen it.
What is this?
But it's not.
A lot of confusion and I'm just trying to get to the crux of the matter. Is this an ad? And if so, who paid for it?
Okay. Chief of Staff?
Chief of Staff.
Thank you. It is an ad. We are trying to, um, encourage the Visit Waukegan. I forgot the other word that, from our public relations. But we are put, placing small ads in our local newspapers for our community to visit Waukegan. I think that one says Play Waukegan. We are starting that trend. That one, we was able to get with P, uh, Puro Football, but we have other local advertisings going again up to advocate for the city of Waukegan. That's what they're for. And that one is not a, for Planning and Zoning, but our other, uh, engineer, they are also doing the exact same thing that Planning and Zoning said. We have to advertise in English and Spanish. But that is simply a, uh, Visit Waukegan ad. There are other ads that are also advertised.
Good Work Play, Mary Ann, City Waukegan, Mary Ann Taylor. And again, it's, it's a, it's a English language ad in a Spanish language newspaper. I don't see that.
I have a question. Is the payment that was made to the city for that particular item or was it for what came out of Planning and Zoning? Or one of the other departments?
Where'd this go from?
That one's separate out of the mayor's office.
The mayor paid for that.
The mayor pays for that?
Yes. I actually am the one that facilitated that one.
He's not registered. Can you find some website? I was saying Illinois, I said Puro Football Newspaper. That's my question. Illegal payments.
Okay, we can't do questions from the audience.
Okay. What is the, uh, specific question?
You're entering into an illegal payment to a person who is not even a, a legal entity, the state of Illinois.
Yep.
How can you, you're putting liability to the city of Waukegan for making illegal payments to someone who's not even a legal entity?
And so, what the mayor stated is that this, this payment did not come from, um, the city. This, this is not a payment from the finance department.
It came from the city. Came from the mayor's office.
Okay. All right, everyone, if I can, if, if we can have some decorum, I'm, I'm trying to answer your question. If you, if you... So, you're asking about the legality of issuing this, this ad, correct?
I'm saying the legality that you are entering, putting in liability to city Waukegan because you're making a payment with tax dollars to an entity who's not legitimate in the state of Illinois.
And the basis for you saying it's not legitimate is because it's not, uh, registered with the Secretary of State as an LLC or a corporation?
Correct.
But it's a sole proprietor? Sole proprietors aren't required to be registered with the... LLCs are. You're correct. Corporation, uh, corporations are as well. They're neither. They're not an LLCs. They're not a corporation. They're a sole proprietor. So what I'm saying to you and you is you are correct. They are not registered with the Secretary of State. What I'm saying is they're not required to because the Secretary of State, if you look at their website, requires registrations of LLCs and corporations. This entity is neither.
This, eh, Marcus, I don't know if you wanna see this, but it, this is a document that's from Illinois SOS, Secretary of State. It shows that the Puro Football Soccer League Association has a newspaper.
You know, I, I would just raise, um, when you form an LLC in the state of Illinois, uh, you put it for your intended business purpose that you're willing to conduct any and all lawful business in the state of Illinois. You can leave it very general and very open. I don't know what was done in this instance. I just know that from experience. So maybe in this instance, this nonprofit, which is, does show on, on the Secretary of State's website as Puro Football Soccer League Association, can also have a newspaper. I don't think that there is anything against the law from having a soccer association with a publication. So I'm just, I'm putting that out there just for informational purposes, not to be argumentative.
Chaos and confusion.
That might be an issue with the Secretary of State in terms, in terms of how the corporation was formed.
All right, so, is that, where, where, no, oh, so, so the ad is not part, that ad is not part of this bill run that we're discussing, right? It's not. It's, 'cause it was paid for out of your office.
It's in that bill run? I don't know if it was on this bill run or the previous bill run. Yeah. I think it was the previous bill run, Alderman.
Jiminy Cricket.
Okay. So that was last month's go-on. Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, I don't know if anybody caught that. The date, someone asked the date. It's the, the twenty-eighth of June through the fourth of July is what it says in the front of the paper. In English.
I, I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, we revisit what we're voting on again.
Okay, item D, motion to approve the vendor payments dated July third in the amount of two million sixteen dollars, eight hundred and forty thousand and thirty-one cents. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item five, there being no reports and communication, old business.
Yes, I would like to, um, do a motion or consider, um...
Alderman Felix, I, I believe you're referring to a, uh, a different item. So right now we're on the salary ordinance.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought we were old business.
Okay. Okay.
What was that?
We're, I'm not even sure what you're asking, but we don't yell out that happened and that was your audience time. So, item A, um, was this something that... So, item A, was this something that you wanted tabled? Was that it? Or for item A under old business, or I'm not sure?
No.
Fixing the salaries?
Okay, yes.
It was tabled last time to this time.
Exactly. We need to move forward. It's already held up a bunch of times. So Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set the table on this one. This was postponed, actually, from the last, from the June 20th. Alderman Turner made a motion to approve the amended and restated ordinance, subject to a further amendment, striking the, and it's gonna be a little confusing, the two percent annual increase from the amended ordinance. In effect, the amendment to the amended ordinance was to keep the base salary of the clerk and the treasurer the same, but to allow the two percent increase.
Exactly.
And so, that is what's on the table at this time.
Okay. So is, because it says mayor, clerk, and treasurer, so we're just doing clerk and treasurer then? Okay, all of them.
All three, we'll get the two percent increase.
The amendment was for all.
These things are getting a lot of echo.
They're too loud.
Okay. So, can I have a first and a second to this ordinance then?
First.
For the amendment?
Before, before we get to a first, we already, we have Alderman Turner's motion from the, from June 20th on the table. So it was continued, we're back to where we were at the end of the, of June 20th discussion of this item. The motion's on the table, the Alderman can discuss the amended and restated ordinance as further amended by Alderman Turner.
Okay. We're discussing the two percent increase, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
We had that from June 20th.
Okay, and we can, we can ask questions now, or make statements?
Yeah, this would be the, this would be the discussion portion.
Okay. We had the first and the second at the last meeting, so this is the discussion of it.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
And so I understand, it was asked in Janet's presentation to have a salary survey? Is that what you were suggesting? A salary survey?
I believe a salary survey is in order.
What would that accomplish, ma'am?
Yeah, but tell us a little bit more about that.
Well, because there seems to be concern about this being overly generous, and I'm talking about salary survey overall for the city of Waukegan, not just me. But it isn't even for me, it's for the position. So I'm looking, that's what, I think that would be most fair and equitable at this point, is to conduct a salary survey for everyone.
And then I recall, I think in your PowerPoint, you also pointed out, even if we gave this position an increase, it's still lower comparison to other states? Did I read that correctly in your PowerPoint?
Yes, it was the same PowerPoint I gave to everyone. Yes, you're right.
Okay, so, do we want to vote on this before the salary survey then? Or is that, I mean, I...
No, this has moved on like three times already. I think it's time to move forward and vote this out. Call it a day.
Can I, can I say something? I'm sorry, Alderman Guzman, have you done it?
Alderman Guzman, Alderman.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, my microphone's on.
It's time to get it done.
Guys, I need to be able to recognize who's going to speak. Okay. So, before you talk, Alderman Florian, were you finished, Alderman Guzman?
Yes, I am. I think just, we just need to move forward.
Okay. Alderman Florian.
I'm so sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to, since Madam Clerk decided to call me out specifically. We, we just had a meeting two, three weeks ago about long-term revenue allocation plan and for supplemental revenue. Supplemental revenue is what we anticipate getting from the tax on marijuana and the casino, and, and I've been one of the proponents of talking about what exactly are we gonna do with that money. On, on the ninth page of this document is long-term challenges, okay? Personnel costs consist of eighty-five percent of our budget, and the salary costs expect to increase two million dollars per year, every year. When I first started as Alderman, I believe the salaries, when we approved them every payday, were one point five million, I think they're at one point eight now. So it's gone up just that much in the short time I've been Alderman. So that's number one. Pensions, we all talk about the police and fire pension and the city workers' pension. Our current debt on our city pensions total is two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, two hundred and sixty-eight million, as of right now. That's not counting what we're gonna accumulate next year and the year after that. Borrowing costs, our debt service, nine million a year, nine million a year. That's what we owe on money we've already borrowed. Infrastructure needs, lead line service replacement, a hundred and twenty-five million over twenty years. Capital maintenance, twenty million over ten years, at a minimum. Facilities construction, we need a new police department. Anyone who's been over there knows that building is on its last legs. Seventy-five million for a public safety facility, a hundred million for our water plant. Okay, that's just one page out of here. How anyone who sits up here as a voluntarily run, I mean, we all choose to run for these positions, you know what the salary is when you take the position. Frankly, I will just say out loud, if anyone takes these jobs for the money, they're nuts, they're nuts. Because you do not get paid enough to sit here, no matter how much you get paid, even the mayor, even Marcus, they don't get paid enough to sit up here and take the bullshit we take on a weekly basis, or bi-weekly basis. So it's not personal, Janet, I don't, it's not you, it's not Dr. Schwab, it's not the mayor, it's this. This is what I was elected to address. This is what I was...
Mr. Mclemore, that is your first warning. You are in violation. Okay, it's time to leave. It's time to leave, sir. Time to leave. Time to leave, sir. Okay, Alderman Florian.
This is what we were elected to address. These are the problems we were elected to solve. Do we have the answers to everything? Absolutely not. There's not enough money in pile A to pay for pile B. So as an elected official up here, I cannot believe anyone would ask us to ignore all of these needs, to put more money in our own pocket, to do what we voluntarily said we would run to do, being up here as an elected official. So, I'm done.
Sir, you've said it out. See, okay. It's time to leave. It's time to leave. It's time to leave, sir. If you can't follow the rules, you need to... Okay. Would you need to be escorted, sir? Or would you like to leave on your own?
Sorry, I didn't...
I didn't mean to create chaos, but I had to have my say. Okay, so...
I'd like to, one more thing, Mayor, follow up with Alderman Florian had the same. Every single one of us received that same report that Alderman Florian just said. What they said, eventually we're gonna have to raise taxes. You know what I said over my dead body? And I said, okay, we're gonna have to find cuts. Where are we gonna find the money? Okay? We're gonna attract new businesses, we're gonna attract everything like that. But every single official who runs for office, whether it's the next ones that run for office or the previous, they already know what they're gonna make. Trust me. And hear me very loud and clear, whether the next city clerk makes sixty thousand or twenty thousand, they're gonna run for that office. Okay? So if we give these raises, the only person that it's gonna hurt is the people. Because where are we gonna come up with that money? So let's go and vote, and let's move forward.
Okay. Roll call, please, ma'am.
What is the, what is the...
We voting on what?
Okay. Do you want to read it, the way that it would...
So I'm gonna clarify. This is a vote to approve the amended and restated ordinance, number twenty-three oh one twenty-five, fixing the salaries to be paid to elected officials of the city of Waukegan, Illinois, holding the offices of mayor, clerk, and treasurer, subject to the further amendment by Alderman Turner to strike from that ordinance the Section 5A Pay Plan effective date. What that essentially means is that the, if you vote yes to approve this, the clerk and the mayor and the treasurer will have no effect as to their base pay, however, there will be a two percent annual increase.
Effective when?
Effective twenty twenty-five, so it doesn't kick in until the next term.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, just to clarify, that's if you vote yes, you are voting for a two percent annual increase effective twenty twenty-five.
Correct. And let me kind of elucidate on what happens if you vote no. If you vote no, then we're back to the original amended and restated ordinance. That was striking both the base pay as well as the two percent. So the effect of that is that there would be no change to the base pay of the clerk, the mayor, and the treasurer, and there will be no two percent annual increase. That's what happens if this vote ends in a no. We're just back to the original amended and restated ordinance of June 20th.
So the vote would have to be, we'd have to have two votes?
At least. We'd have to have at least two votes. If we, well, if we vote yes, we're done.
Right.
If we vote no, then there's at least, yeah. And if we get there, I can walk through what happens at that point.
So does everybody understand what you're voting on? Does anybody have questions as to what you're voting on? Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donna Worth.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
No.
Alderman Martinez.
No.
Alderman Felix.
No.
No is happened.
So now we are where we were with the amended and restated complaint. This would be, the ordinance here strikes both the increase in base pay as well as the two percent annual increase. That, I believe, had a first and a second prior to being amended. And so it already has a first and a second, that can be open for discussion.
So clarify again, a yes vote for this is to raise the base salary and the two percent?
The opposite. So a yes on the amended and restated means no increase of any kind.
Okay.
Yes is no increase.
Yes is no, and no is yes.
That says it best, I think. Would you say that again, Alderman Newsom?
Yes is no, no is yes.
Okay. Any questions to that? Does everybody understand how they're voting?
Repeat one more time, sorry.
The yes vote means no, no raises.
Whatsoever.
Right, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Donna Worth.
Yes.
Alderman Florian.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, give increases.
No.
No. No, thank you, that's why I did that, thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, what's, just to clarify, what's the vote? No.
And the vote is no, ma'am? Alderman Guzman?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez?
Yes.
Alderman Felix?
Yes.
Yes is happened.
So the amended and restated ordinance is passed, there are no increases either in the base pay or the two percent, the two percent annual increases not approved as well.
Okay, on the new business.
Oh, still, for old business, I would like to motion to reconsider resolution to approve, in agreement with Arena Strategies Communications LLC for professional communications consulting services.
What?
Okay, and is that for, is there a time period you want it for, the whole contract?
So I would like to do three months for now, for a transition of period.
So we, we actually don't reach there. If you're doing a motion to reconsider, you're just reconsidering the vote wholesale. We don't get to the substantive portion. We don't get into what the contract looks like. And in fact, the, if your motion is seconded, and if it's approved to reconsider, that item would be on June seventeenth's agenda for discussion. It would be as if the June twentieth vote on, on that item had never taken place. You start from the very beginning.
And we can talk about it then, right?
You'll talk about it again.
Okay.
So it goes to July seventeen?
Yeah, so all you're doing right now is reconsider, reconsider to bring it back on July seventeenth to...
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay. So that was Alderman Felix who brought it, and Alderman Guzman second. Any questions to that? So that was for Arena Communications, and it's just to hear it at the next July seventeenth meeting.
We just, we debated this thing ad nauseam before we voted on it.
Which item are we talking about?
This was a motion to reconsider, it's not on the agenda, Alderman Felix...
So there's no vote?
Well, no, this is to reconsider a previous vote. The, our code puts a limit on when you can reconsider a vote. You only have until the second subsequent meeting in order to reconsider. Once you pass that second subsequent meeting, you no longer have the power to reconsider. So it does not appear on the agenda, which is why you can't take a final action on it. It's just to discuss it again in July seventeenth.
Okay. So we have a first and a second, so...
No, we don't, oh, for that.
Yeah, we have a first and a second, so we go to roll call then, right?
Unless there's discussion, it would just be roll call.
Okay. Okay, we have...
And this is just the motion to reconsider.
This is just the motion to reconsider.
Why, what's the rationale for reconsidering?
Well, obviously, they see value, so, and that's...
That's what I'm asking, what's the value? I'm asking you, I'm asking Victor, or Alderman Felix, what's the rationale? Why do you want to reconsider?
I think reconsidering is a procedural point, and then the discussion will take place at the time that we vote, in July seventeenth.
Are we getting ready to take a vote now? Don't we get to discuss the vote that we're getting...
We're just reconsidering, putting on the agenda for the seventeenth. There's no action being taken at this council meeting.
Got it, okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, go ahead, sir.
So can I have a roll call, please?
You want, you want me to expand, or you...
No, because it's just to reconsider it, so...
Wouldn't that be a consensus?
No. It would be roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Tell me what the motion is, that we're doing a roll call.
It's a motion to reconsider Arena Communications at the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
What about Arena Communications?
So the motion is to reconsider that vote regarding the denial of Arena Communications.
So we voted to deny the contract for Arena Communications, and now we're reconsidering the contract, the approval of the contract for Arena Communications?
It would be a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, a motion to reconsider the...
At the July seventeenth meeting.
A motion to reconsider the denial of the contract for Arena Communications.
Correct.
Right, got it, okay, thank you.
And who's the first and second?
It was Alderman Felix, and second was Alderman Guzman. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Donna Worth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
So this will be heard with no further action on uh July seventeenth city council meeting.
Okay. New business, um can I have a motion to omnibus?
So moved.
So we're gonna take out a couple things first, item uh G, I believe, was taken out? Was that in, that was in committee, right?
No, we're, we're taking it out now. It was a discussion, it's in error on the city council, so G will be uh taken out from the agenda.
And then the other one that's taken out i- is item um Q is taken out, okay.
This is.
And then S.
S was taken out?
And then like to take out I and J, please.
Okay, to be heard, right?
Yes.
Item M is being withdrawn at the petitioner's request, so you can take out item M as um, so ones that will not be heard.
I, I think that's just being postponed, item M.
No.
Was.
That was in committee.
Oh, it was in the committee, but it's not being sent to council tonight. It'll be sent at the, uh I think they wanna uh do that in August.
Right, this is for Saint Martin de Porres.
Yeah. Oh, okay, you're right.
It over was held in committee and it is not on this agenda.
Okay, okay.
The intention is to move item M forward this evening.
Sorry, we want to get that one done, I didn't want to scare ya, okay. Yeah.
M, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask for a point of clarification, I'm sorry, but uh item M was slightly amended, I think, for two items within, so it's just, we're voting on it as amended at committee, right? Okay.
Okay, I don't know.
That's correct, so uh as to the conditions, I believe it was twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um it may be prudent to take that separately in light of the amendment to the conditions.
Okay, so we're pulling it out, but um we'll hear it as part of this. Okay, so the items that I see that are pulled is item G is taken off of the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're pulling out items I, J, M, Q, and S, correct? Is that what everybody said?
Yes.
So then I'm gonna ask to omnibus items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, K, L, N, O, and P, and R.
So moved.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just um might be missing, so is it M or N that is coming off?
M.
Huh?
Mary.
Thank you.
M.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
So moved.
So can I have a motion, um Alderman Guzman, second by Alderman Martinez, to hear the omnibus items? Okay, item A, a motion to approve the Little Four Alliance Club request to hold its candy days on October thirteenth and fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, in accordance with the Lions of Illinois statewide fundraising. Item B, a resolution accepting an energy transition community, ETC, grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCEO. Item C, a resolution approving an agreement insurance program managers group, IPMG, effective July first, twenty twenty-three, for a four-year term with an estimated annual amount of seventy-five thousand. The matter was presented to the uh government oversight and operations committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item D, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for police department workman's compensation claim number um two-two-one-one-one-one zero W zero-one-four for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. This matter was presented at the regular government operations and oversight committee meeting on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item E, a resolution ratifying the engagement of the Driscoll Law Firm LLC to provide legal services to the city of Waukegan related to PFAS slash AFFF multi-district litigation. This matter was presented at the government oversight and operations committee meeting on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item F, a resolution approving participation in the Lake County Home Consortium. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item H, a resolution to approve the purchase of two MPS Falcom thirty-one hundred portable camera trailer system pursuant to section two dash four five eight I two of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances. The matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item K, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a subdivision public improvements agreement with PT Land LLC for the River Glen subdivision finalization of public improvements. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item L, an ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-seven thirteen, the site plan approval for an additional drive-through lane at the existing restaurant at eight fifty South Washi- or Waukegan Road. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Um, item N, ordinance approving the zoning calendar twenty-seven sixteen of variance from requirements to provide vegetation screening and uh berry cables for solar electric installation at twenty eighty-two North Butrick Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item O, an ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-seven seventeen of variance from fence requirements for ornamental style and prohibited of the barbed wire at twenty eighty-two North Butrick Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item P, an ordinance approving the zoning calendar twenty-seven eighteen, a conditional use permit for solar photovoltaic field of twenty eighty-two North Butrick Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on July third, twenty twenty-three. Item R, an ordinance enacting a special curfew for SCOOP Waukegan. Okay, all those said, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Okay, um on to item I, can I have a first and a second, and then we'll hear the questions to it? Um, okay, Alderman Newsom was the first, a second, Alderman Florian, okay. Um, any questions to the motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'd just like clar- clarification about this, this project for the new animal control building. Excuse me, 'cause it's, I, maybe I misunderstood, sometimes I do that. But I understood we passed one point two or one point five million dollars for this project, and now we're coming back and asking for an additional quarter million dollars for demolition of a, of the existing building, and I.
No, it's just twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry, excuse me. So, but my, my understanding was that we were going to expand that building.
The existing building?
Yeah.
No, it was a tear down from the very beginning, because that building doesn't, isn't in good shape.
Then why wasn't the demolition included in the?
Um, I think it's done through separate bids. Um Director Garland, do you have the information on that? You can clarify it, because it's done as two separate steps.
Twenty-four, yeah, twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Yeah, it was done on a separate um, a separate bid to where the only thing that they were gonna do was come in and put up the new structure, the new building. So we would have to have it uh demolished on our own.
Okay, maybe I'm confused because we're.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I'm confused because we're paying to build a building and then we come destroy it first, maybe we should, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, that building was not in good enough shape for us to save it.
Correct. Building, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah.
Not understanding the sequencing and, and the planning of this project, but I think I got it now, go ahead, thank you, took the vote.
Um, okay, any other questions to this?
Actually, I do. Okay, so I remember the vote on the last city council, okay? I favored the, uh, I'm glad the Alderman second ward voted for this at animal control building, but what I recall is for the one point five million, and that was, I thought that was gonna include everything. So why is it twenty-four thousand now? So was the demolition not considered at the time that they were trying to do the building? Because I would've thought it would've been, I mean, even though it was two separate, like you just said, you would think the whole money would be there.
Because there's different builder, or different groups doing it, so they don't give us that when, um so Ron was the one doing the actual structure, but they're not taking down the building. So I think what Alderman um Turner was referring to, at one point, we thought we could um take down part of the building and keep part of the building, not permanently, but while we were building.
Okay.
But that can't happen, because we need the space that that is in.
You're right.
But it was never going to be part of it.
Okay.
So Alderman Newsom, did you, you wanted to say something?
The chief had talked to us about uh the amount of money that we had set aside.
Yes.
But then the project is gonna come in less, is that what you were saying, something about the, the animal shelter?
Yes, the animal shelter, uh, we are, the footprint that is currently there, we're gonna need over three quarters of the current footprint, so that's the reason why the whole building should come down, and um we should allow all the contractors to be able to work more efficiently. Um when it comes to the funding, there is funding that you approved in the fixed assets money to allow us to finish the things that are not in the primary um invoicing and part of the contract. That's like the external kennel, kennels, the um parking lot, the internal fence, internal fencing, the landscaping, those things are accounted for, oh, and the sprinkler. Um, there has been a request to have sprinkler system where the um animals are being held, to protect the animals. That portion is not part of the primary contract, and we knew that from the very beginning, that that would be additional things, and that funding is secured within the budget for us to take care of that. And we're estimating it at about two hundred thousand dollars to finish all of those things, but we knew that from the very beginning, and that was expressed from the beginning, that we had to take care of those items um after they build the primary structure.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Can I just comment here? Uh I actually visited the uh, the animals, and it, that place is deplorable. I mean, I, I left, I had a tour throughout the day, and I must say that when I left, I almost had tears in my eyes, alright? That place needs, it, it needs a whole, I'm glad we're knocking it down, I fully support it. Um, that's something that community really does need. My question is, where are the dogs going while, while we're doing this demolition, where are the, you mentioned North Chicago, where, where are they gonna be temporarily while this is going on, when they're building down a building?
Absolutely, Alderman, the um animal control supervisor and our chief of police, Navarro, they have secured, um, they begin to secure uh temporary um support in North Chicago. They've spoken with the po- chief of police and the mayor and their uh council members to secure it through, we're hoping around November, but they have, there's some minor um adjustments to accommodate our animals, but they, we look to have that secured through North Chicago.
Was there also a question about the one point five million, whether the entirety of that was being used for animal control, or was it some of it being used?
Um, there is in that.
At the beach or something?
Yes, in that funding, there is a, was appropriated one point five million dollars, and that is for the lakefront beach house, and to finish off these items that I mentioned to you at the uh animal control. And that's the reason why we feel that it'll be a one point three million dollar project for the beach house at the lakefront, but we still are working on that, that's this year's project. We're anticipating that two hundred thousand dollars to come out of that one point five million dollars that you just expressed.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm confused, yours. One point five million dollars to do the animal control and the beach?
No.
Okay, so.
The animal control was already funded, you approved that previously, back in March.
Right.
The one point five is secured for this fiscal year. That's the beach house and the remaining items of the animal control.
Remaining items, got it, okay, thank you, sir. Good job.
Does that answer everybody's questions on this?
How much is that beach house?
That is undetermined at this time, that was just an estimated number, but our lakefront coordinator, she is not here. Her and our grant writer, they're actually trying to secure funds to fund the beach house. So that's a fluid project right now, but your staff is pursuing a grant.
Okay, thank you.
So that'll help decrease the costs, and that's why we constantly do the grant looking. Um, and they want to hold off on that, because there is a potential for a grant. Um, but they're still looking into whether we can meet the qualifications for it, so.
I think it needs, it needs showers and stuff like that down there and stuff like that, I wish it, they would never torn in the other one, but they should've just renovated or done something, but, okay, thank you.
But that won't be ready for this year anyway, so that's why we're looking at getting the, you know, the money that we had tentatively set aside and doing some of that for the animal control, and then hoping the, you know, we can do this grant. Um, any other questions to this? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item J, can I have a first and a second, and then we'll do discussion?
Um, this was held over in committee, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, this one was held over?
Yes.
Okay.
Held in the committee, so it'll appear on the August seventh agenda as old business.
Um, item M, there was an amendment to this, am I correct?
There was an amendment, um if I may read it, I have conferred with uh the app, the petitioner, and they're okay with this language, if you feel it reflects the motion uh as it was amended on the floor. So it would read instead, motion to adopt an ordinance amending a conditional use permit and approving a variance for zoning calendars twenty-seven fourteen and twenty-seven fifteen for the operation of a sports facility at an educational institution at thirty-one oh six Belvedere Road, with amendments to condition twenty-one to require consultation with Lake County Audubon for bird protection requirements, and condition twenty-two to require a meeting with the development review board to provide an update on the status of the I dot review of the traffic signal within twenty-four months, with authority for the approval of parking lot landscaping requirements by the development review board, and that landscaping as approved must be installed within thirty-six months of the disposition from I dot with proper permits.
Got it.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Noel.
Any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
I don't have a first or a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did a first and a second.
First.
Second. Okay.
I'm sorry, Turner was first?
No.
No. Who was second?
Alderman Hayes.
Oh, oh, okay, Alderman Martinez, and second was Hayes, was that it?
I think it was backwards, but I guess it works.
So go with Hayes and Martinez.
That works for me.
Okay.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item Q, was this held over or in committee or?
No, I think it's just, we have to excuse Alderman Guzman.
Okay.
Yes, I was just about to say that.
Q and S.
Yeah, Q and S.
Okay, so we'll vote on Q and S at the same, you know, right consecutively?
No, no, yes, yes.
So can I have a motion for item Q, I need it first?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Turner in second?
Second.
Hayes? Okay, item Q, an ordinance creating a Class A tavern for Pete's Pub, Inc., uh DBA Sunset Bowl at twenty fifteen North Lewis Avenue. This matter was presented at the July third, twenty twenty-three Community Development Committee meeting. Um, any questions to the motion?
Um, Mayor, um, I, I listened to Alderman Turner and, and the committee talking about, you know, how great of a um, you know, organization they run, but I believe I've heard um in the past, we've had, they were given a, a telephone, uh, what do you call this, cell towers?
Cell tower, yeah.
And there were some conditions. And there were some conditions, um, placed on that cell tower. I've, I've heard about this at planning and zoning a couple times. And it appears that not all those conditions have been met. And so I'm, I just wanna, wanted to bring that up and see if we can hear from, since he's here, if we can hear from him about his point of view of, of the conditions from the cell tower and what, what we can
What happened, yeah.
expect to see.
It'd be my pleasure, yes. Um, so been working on this for almost three years now with the company, uh, parallel to get this job started. Um, two, two years, nothing was happening, I kept calling every week to find out what was going on, they kept saying it was engineering. And I finally got hold of the person who I was calling, who he calls. And now I'm communicating with her and we already have plans submitted to, uh, Community Development and Planning and Zoning. Uh, we're working on some landscaping, um, requirements with square feet and figuring out where the parking spots are gonna be. We, we're obviously losing quite a few parking spots because of the landscaping. And we're trying to, you know, we have, they have plans, they have an engineer who's constantly changing it and I, 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 I hope that we can, Noel's been working with the, the comp, the company also. And, uh, we, we, I want to get going by the end, by the end of this, uh, summer because I'd like to have that completed for the return of the league bowlers in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there some negative impact to the scheduling be, because of COVID, right?
Well, that was the original delay when, uh, all COVID happened. And then, um, you know, I knew we had, I think it was a three-year period, once the conditional use permit was granted to get the project done, they always told me it was gonna take three weeks to come in and come out, they were gonna bring some big company in that it's like the guys who do Walmarts and Targets and they, they, they got a huge, huge crew. Uh, and again, I tried, uh, the, the last two summers, I called every week and talked to this construction guy, Pat, and I finally asked him, well, who, who do you call when I call you? And then that's when he gave me Laura's number and I've been communicating with her, she's very, responds to my texts, she calls me back. She's gotten all the plans done. Uh, right now it's all being reviewed by the city to try to make everything works out right with the, with the amount of square feet that is needed with all of the, and plus the landscaping, I think code has changed too, since the original plans were first done. Uh, you guys have required more grass and trees and bushes and, and of course, it's, it's, it's costing me parking spots, but we, we have a plan to try to maximize my, uh, ability to fill the house and make sure everyone get there in a car and, and have a place to park.
And I'll also add that we met with Noel and her staff last week, Mr. Gogetz and I, and we went over all this and this is something that he adamantly wants to go forward, so he's not resisting.
More than, more than you guys do, believe me. I don't like the way it looks, I like it to look beautiful and make it an inviting place. It's great inside, we just gotta get people in there and I think the outside will help bring them in and
Yeah.
and everyone can have a great time and have fun.
Thank you for answering my question.
All right. Always something happening in the sixth ward.
See, that was, that was painless, right? Um, okay, um, we've got a first and a second on that one, it's Turner and Hayes, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman. Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item S, um, can I have a first and a second?
I saw move.
Second.
Florian and who was the second?
I first did, Bolton.
Okay. Martinez, okay, so Florian.
No, it wasn't me, it was Bolton.
I'm sorry, Florian and Bolton.
No, I wasn't involved.
Oh, sorry, so the voices are hard to hear. Who was the first and second on this? First was Bolton, second is who?
Me, I'll take it.
Okay, Turner, thank you. Okay, an ordinance permitting sale and possession of alcoholic beverages in certain areas and enacting further regulations for SCOOP Wakegan. Any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman. Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Hey, Mayor, before we go on, just, and I know we already passed this, but can we just state on item R, what the special curfew for SCOOP is?
Okay.
I'll, I'll take this, just give me one second here.
Actually, do you have it in front of you?
I have it.
Okay, Alderman Florian, you wanna say it then?
Person's younger than fourteen years old, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian, eight PM to six AM the following day. Person's at least fourteen, but younger than sixteen years old, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian, nine PM to six AM the following day. And person's at least sixteen, but younger than eighteen years old, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian, ten PM to six AM the following day. So fourteen and under, eight o'clock, fourteen to sixteen, nine o'clock, sixteen to eighteen, ten o'clock.
Yeah, and that's, that's not just at SCOOP, but throughout the city, right?
No, that's, just at SCOOP. So the ordinance, um, kinda delineates an area and calls it the, the event zone. So within that event zone, uh, the curfew is in effect.
Great, thank you very much.
And I'll just add another, this is, uh, similar to last year's, uh, SCOOP zone curfew hours.
Thank you, Mayor, for your indulgence.
Okay, um, did we do a roll call on S? We didn't yet, right?
Yes.
We did, okay. Um, there being no ordinances, closing items, um, Alderman time.
Alderman Newsom.
All right.
Alderman Turner.
Great, thank you, I got several. Um, I'll end with the good, but first we wanna go through, you know, we seem to every meeting have, uh, a lot of controversies and things that, chaos and controversy. So the first thing that I'd like to address and have explanation of is this new policy that was implemented. We were informed of in our meeting with the chief of staff on Thursday wherein the alderman can no longer communicate with the department heads or, or staff. And that everything that we would like needs to be sent via email to the chief of staff. And I find that very objectionable. And, and I would like an expla, to hear your explanation or an explanation of why that is necessary. And just open it up for discussion. The mayor left. The mayor is gone. George.
Uh, please, if you could repeat that.
Yeah, so I'm questioning this new policy that you informed us of on Thursday, and I think it was Alderman Florian and Alderman Newsom and I were meeting with you and you said, hey, new policy is that the alderman, none of the aldermen can interact with the department heads, that any interactions for it that we would normally do with the department heads, I said, go to you via an email. Okay, right?
I think I expressed it a different way, yes, we would like for you to communicate that through me so we can be a little bit more efficient. Um, there's nine elected officials with, um, you all having different wards and different requests. We would like those to be funneled through me, and again, I stated those were special requests. For instance, a stop sign, having those installed in certain locations, light, lighting, streetlights, those types of things and guiding staff. We would like for those to be funneled through the mayor's office. So many of those things can go directly to the person that can mitigate them. And also, those can be approved if they have, need a funding mechanism through the mayor instead of going directly to the department head and them trying to do their already assigned tasks and objectives that they, and goals that they have for their departments with the, uh, added, um, request from you. If those come through the, um, mayor's office, we can better send those to who can actually mitigate those. And if there's approvals that the department heads need, the mayor can give those as the request comes in. And it was not just via, um, I wanna correct it if I did say it that way, it wasn't just email. If you can, any way, informal, as long as you get it to me, we wanna make sure that you can better quickly answer your constituents' requests.
So again, thank you very much, chief of staff, but I, I strenuously objected to this new policy. It's not gonna make things easier, it's gonna make them much more difficult, it's gonna add another layer of bureaucracy and it's, you're gonna get overwhelmed. Uh, it's gonna be extremely difficult, if not impossible, for us to, uh, follow through. And I'll, I'll just give you a kind of a quick scenario, right? If, if, and, and imagine this, if, if only, if, if each of us nine receive ten calls per week, you know, some days I get over, over twenty, but just for the sake of discussion. You get ninety calls from us that have to filter through you, right? And one of the calls is, hey, Alderman Turner, there's a tree blocking a stop sign at such and such place at, at, at this intersection. Now, I have to stop and, and find time to craft an email to you and explain what was explained to me by the requesting. It's at the corner of Poplar and Ridgeland, it's the northbound stop sign. Then I have to give that, send an email to you. At some point, you're gonna read the email, you might not read it for two days or three days, right? And then you're gonna have to interpret that, gee, Lord, it's a stop sign, and you're gonna send it to Chris. Chris is gonna look at it and he's gonna send it down to Art or whoever Art's replacement is. Meanwhile, the, the resident is gonna call me and say, hey, I asked you to do this, what's going on, you didn't get done, right? So it's gonna, it's gonna really delay the process, George. Now, times, take, take that kind of scenario and multiply it ninety times in, in just one week and it, it is not gonna be efficient, believe me, so.
Um, for clarification, if I may, sir?
Yes, sir.
Um, it is not for the typical, um, calling for a tree down. Um, we also get calls for the garbage cans that weren't picked up during the regular pick, scheduled time. It is for things outside of that.
So what, 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 what would the, what, what's the line, what's?
I know, and that's what one of the alder, other elected officials had asked for. And I am speaking with the mayor, so I can better clarify that. But again, we just would like those things, some of the items that were sent in via our elected officials, they sometimes don't go to the right department. And again, that will also assist and aid me to make sure that I get it to the proper, um,
I'm telling you, sir, it doesn't work. We already have that policy in effect essentially, right, with the building department where the aldermen can't talk to the code compliance officer, we have to call the, the building commissioner or the code compliance supervisor. And I'll tell you from my experience, numerous, it's a, it's a regular feature of that communicate, that line of communication is voicemail boxes are filled, right? Or they don't return phone calls, they don't respond to emails, or you, three or five days later, you get an email from, I get an email from you about it. So it's, it's, it's a disaster for efficiency, George, I'm telling you, this is not gonna work and it is not gonna work, I, I strongly encourage you to reconsider.
I will speak with the mayor.
May I add a little something?
Someone else have something? Alderman Bolton.
I do see what Alderman Turner is saying and I agree. And I, but I'm not here to necessarily buck the system, whatever it helps to expedite the situation, I get it. But it also was in place so that I can have a relationship with my departments. And now it's, I gotta go, uh, through an email. It just seems so impersonal. But my question is, on the sheet where we display Alderman on one side and our phone number and on the back is the department head's numbers, are the constituents also expected to send an email or can they still, you see what I mean, it's kinda conflicting here.
No, trust me.
They can't call those numbers now.
Trust me, you're, the constituents definitely call your department heads very frequently. They call you, they call the mayor's office and they are responding to all the different, um, avenues of requests.
So there's no need for them to just say, hey, don't call me, call George, call the mayor. Give out the mayor's cell phone number and just take us out of it, right?
You have that great relationship with your wards, we would never tell them to do that.
Yeah, a lot of confusion, chaos and confusion. Thank you, anyone else?
So just encouraging, let's reconsider, maybe have a discussion, what would best work?
I will further discuss with the mayor, absolutely.
Okay. Can I, can I say something? I mean, I, I already, when I, when I have a request from my residents and I have to email the building department or whatever, because you're right, they don't answer their phone very often and if they do, it's full. Um, but I already just tagged George on the email that I sent, like, I'm, I'm already doing that. If I send a text message to Chris Garland, I include chief of staff on that. I mean, I'm, I've already been doing that all along. Frankly, because I get better responses if I do that, but.
Yeah, I do that sometimes, I don't, I'm not consistent with.
I do it every time, because it, it works better for me that way, but I still reach out. I, Chris Garland can, can, can say, I probably call him more than anybody. Um, and I just tagged George in on the email or the text message.
Can I please say, you're all, you're all your department heads are working extremely hard. For you to be saying that their voicemails are full, that should tell you how busy they are. And they're not answering their phones, it's not purposely, they are working. They are working extremely hard. So it seems like that's a negative thing that they're not answering the phones and their voicemails are full, but they are extremely busy. So it's not purposeful, I just wanna make sure that that is said, please.
Yeah, you're right, except it's typically one department that is guilty of this. And it's when we used to be able to call our code enforcement officer directly, we can't do that anymore. Now when we try to get ahold of their bosses, we can't get ahold of them either. So it's that one department.
I agree with Alderman Florian, because that one department, forget it. I mean, I'll give you a personal thing.
All right, guys, listen, maybe before we just dump on a particular department, we can just talk about the overarching policy here, which I believe is, um, trying to streamline communications. It's not a perfect system, the amount of changes that have been implemented since the mayor took office have been astounding. Some have worked, some haven't. We can give it a shot or you can just refuse to comply, I suppose. But what I'd encourage everyone to do is just put yourself in the shoes of the department heads who are getting numerous emails from all of us every day that might not even belong to them. They come in, they have their idea of what they're gonna tackle in a day and you just start getting emails from every different alderman who thinks that their issue is the most important.
That's not true.
I am as guilty of this as everybody. So I would just suggest, as you consider this policy, to put yourself in the shoes of those that are on the receiving end of your emails. This process is simply developed to make sure that your, your communication gets to the right person. I just experienced this recently, I, why would I email the chief of police when I can email George? Who knows exactly which police officer my request for, uh, you know, an increase in, uh, patrol, a traffic patrol? Why would I clutter up the chief's, um, inbox, he's got other things to deal with? That's one example, and it was turned around lightning fast. So there, there's valid arguments on both sides, but I, I would just suggest, give it a shot.
Might just mention here, our concerns in, in Ward Three are different from concerns in Eight, Seven. I'm dealing with homelessness, I'm dealing with, with, uh, uh, roads that are messed up, trees, I mean, so I, I'm the kinda person that when I go out there, I like to make sure that I get closure to it, to it. That way I can perform my work and then move forward. I got a lot of calls coming in, you know, I can't, I can't have a best, okay, we're still working on this two weeks, three weeks, I can't go back and forth. When I worked, when I threw it was there, he took care of it quick, I, I barely even talked to Chris Garland. So where are these supervisors, can't, can't they, uh, address the problem, sort of go into a supervisor? I know you guys are busy, it's very difficult, but I need closure, I, I need, I need an estimate date when these things can be done. Otherwise my constituents say, well, I didn't go to, what, you, you, I have a problem that still hasn't been resolved four weeks. You know, a vehicle, you know? I, yes, I did send a, a, a letter out, an email, but I sent it to the wrong department head. I apologize for that, I'm responsible for that, I'm taking ownership of that. But that vehicle's still out there, okay? Again, I'm the type of person, I, I, these things should be addressed, they should be, there should be closure, especially if they're trivial things. We shouldn't have to wait three weeks, four weeks for, for something that, you know, that's already accumulated at, on top, on work, on top of requests, on top of requests, on top of requests. All right, I'm dealing with a lot in Ward Three, all right? But I like to make sure that I'm consistent, that I'm effective, and I can't be that if I have to wait for someone else's decision to pick and choose what they wanna work on or what they don't wanna work on.
You know, I also wanna add, George, and for everyone, I don't think, and, and I know for me, this is the case, and I've talked to several. and I've talked to several of the other aldermen, and it seems to be the consensus, we are not contacting department heads, giving directive, we're not telling anything, it's asking and, and, and adding to, hey, you know what, there's a, here's another problem, guys, put that on the list. And all we're asking is that it gets on the list and you give us an idea of when it can be, when it'll be resolved. And, and ideally, which rarely happens, it does happen sometime, some follow-up, hey, we got it done, right? I get that sometimes, sometimes I don't, but that's goes, that's because you're so busy, I get that. But the idea that we're, we're telling department heads what to do, that's not happening, not in, in the discussion.
So what, what we are getting is that is happening, because sometimes the employees are called directly. Employees should not be called, it should go directly to their bosses, the department heads, or come through us. So that the problem gets into, so you want something done in your ward and they're working in another ward. Do they get pulled from that ward to go to your ward?
Nope.
So it's just making sure that everybody gets equal thing. And then we had an incident where an operation was actually ceased at an alderman's request, which should never happen with our chief of police. They have an operation that they are running, we as aldermen and elected officials do not interfere in that.
Well, wouldn't that be for the chief or whomever to escalate to the chief or the chief of staff or to you?
And they did.
If I, if I say, hey, chief, I need you to go catch some dogs, he would say, man, I'm not catching dogs. I mean, no, no, go tell the mayor, right? That's what he should do.
And that's what happened.
Not just to go, because I told him, go catch a dog, he don't take orders from me. And that's, and that, and that's what I'm trying to say, mayor. None of us are giving orders, right? And maybe it's, maybe it's a matter of misinterpretation?
Well, to some degree, they are trying to please as elected officials. They feel like they need to, you know, listen to what you're saying and do it. Um, and that, you know, I've explained to them, you don't have to do that in the way that you're thinking you do. We're just trying to make sure that it doesn't, um, the aldermen do not run the day-to-day functions of the city.
That's absolutely right.
And that's what we're trying to make sure isn't happening, that they're getting voices from nine people that, or ten people that they shouldn't get.
See, rather than this new policy, I would, I would suggest communication.
Absolutely.
Say, hey, you got, here's a problem we're having, how do we solve this? Because what you're gonna do is you're gonna create a frickin nightmare in terms of efficiencies. And if, if every, if I gotta call George or send an email twenty times a day to get something done, it is not gonna work, I'm telling you, and it, I'm telling you, and I'm not exaggerating, right? Not only do I get, I get phone calls, texts, Facebook messengers, next door messages. I get um, people come and knock on my door and people flag me down in the street. And it happens every day.
And see, the same thing happens, it has to go through the department head, so the department head can determine when that work can be done. And then they can tell you when it's been done, because that's always been a problem in the past, that the project is done, and as an alderman, you're never told that.
So, right, and so, so when I pick up the phone and I call, if I'm calling the public works, I'm either talking to Art or Chris, right? If I'm calling, now, I, I call the chief, but I also call the deputy chiefs. And Tom, I, I don't know if you wanna know how that, the, the, the department is broken into divisions, but I know when to call traffic and when to call a patrol, a night shift patrol, a day patrol. I know when to call uh, traffic officer, Officer Hamilton, or the neighborhood police. And I, I know how to make those distinctions and who to call.
But that should all be handled through the chief, so the chief can assign that.
If it's something I need at the top level, from the top level, I talk to the chief or the deputy, appropriate de- appropriate deputy chiefs, so it filters down.
But as you start to filter down and you start talking to traffic and night shift, I, the chief needs to be notified first that that's happening, so he knows what's going on. Not having it filtered down to employees first under him without him knowing first. So it should always be the department heads that get made aware of things first before any employee, because otherwise, that's not fair to the chiefs not to know that one of their employees.
So, so this is the easy conversation that we're having right here. Hey, don't call, don't call down there and talk to, to the, the traffic guys when you want something done. You wanna stop, you know, you know, call the chief. So that's easy, you don't need a new policy that says, don't talk to nobody.
And that, that is fine, that happening, but it wasn't happening, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Eighteen fifty-nine, maybe I'm doing that, I'm betting that you've been doing it the way we've been doing it. Eighteen fifty-nine, now all of a sudden, we got a whole new policy where we can't talk. And we're, yeah, and I, I just wanna point out now, and I'm not trying to be mean or, or anything, but I just, I gotta tell you, we're all elected officials, right? We're, we are not staff, we don't report to the chief of staff, we don't report to you, right? So we're all, we're all loving it.
But you don't run operations either, and that's what in a sense you're doing.
But I'm just saying, when you tell, when you initiate a policy and you're telling us that we can't talk to someone, that's not gonna fly. We can talk to anyone we want.
You can talk to whoever you want, you just can't give them a work order to do, because that is operations and that needs to go through department heads and us.
And that's what we don't do, but.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm tired of talking, you guys got anything else to say?
Has everybody had alderman time?
No.
No, oh, no, 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 I was just one big piece of what I got.
In twenty minutes, it's time for the others, right?
Nope, we have a limit, so that was the new policy. Um, when I asked about pointing the cameras at the people who were speaking, you kinda made light of that and said, well, we don't have to, we only have to make sure they can be heard. But the purpose of this meeting, public meetings, is so the public can participate and others on watching on the, the YouTube or wherever it's streaming to, that they can see and, and essentially participate too. I don't see the rationale, the, I, I don't know why you wouldn't want the camera on the person that's speaking, that's addressing the council. And I think that needs to be reconsidered, or maybe we need an ordinance about that too. Uh, we already talked about that, and I'm glad we cleared up the ad and the, and the newspaper thing. And I'm not really happy about it, but it is. Now, during that discussion, audience time and so forth, so forth, uh, one of the things that came, as I sat here and I started making notes, and this is, and George, I'm not attacking you, alright? This is not personal. But I wanna raise the point that George Bridges is the chief, mayor's chief of staff. Okay? He's also a commissioner on the, on the Park District. And he's also on the board of directors for Ant Mound, which has a contract with the city. And Park District, we kinda interface with them a lot, right? And then he's also a board member of the Chamber of Commerce. And this conflict of interest showed itself this evening when we discussed the lease agreement, ten dollars a year for the Chamber of Commerce to have office space in City Hall. So George is standing here and he's, he's acting as chief of staff and he's explaining, and he's also, it sounds like he's talking to this Chamber of Commerce guy, right? So we got too much conflict of interest in, in, in that particular office, but generally, I have an objection about um, you know, conflicts of interest in general. We need to be aware of this and cognizant of it. And I'm not suggesting that George resign from any of these things. What I'm suggesting is that maybe George shouldn't be speaking to these things if we have an item for discussion that relates to the Park District or it relates to the Ant Mound or the Chamber of Commerce. George should not be speaking in those, in those discussions. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I understand that, but you also have your city clerk who's on the Park District too.
Right.
And, I mean, that's just, people are going to be involved in their community and.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I don't think he's trying to represent either party, I think he's trying to be neutral. But if that's, you know, if you want somebody else to talk on their behalf, that's fine too.
Well, I'm, mayor, you're the mayor, so you could talk. George doesn't have to talk, you can talk. And, and as far as the, the, the city clerk, she rarely has anything to say about what's going on and discussion about what's happening with the Park District. She may add some clarification, I think twice I've heard, but anyway. I think you see the point, and this is significant, because we've got, again, I'll, I'll name all of you, you got the, the, the Park District, the Ant Mound, and the Chamber of Commerce, right? And, and those are three common, three conflicts of interest. We can't ignore, we can't just say, well, it's not really that bad, right? There's, there's too much, okay? Alright, um, and then finally, uh, I don't remember, did we get a, uh, where do we go with the suggestion about the salary survey? Are we gonna do a salary survey? That was suggested. No?
We can do one, but it's gotta be discussed how that's gonna go out. Is that gonna go out on our website? Is it gonna, if it's a mailing, it's not budgeted for, um, and mailings are expensive?
No, I, I think, I think the idea, who was it that mentioned the salary survey?
Um, the uh, city clerk.
Is that the city clerk? Ma'am, how did you envision the salary surveys? What do, what do you, you wanna talk about that?
The salary survey is usually conducted by an outside source that evaluates and uh, you, you know, just evaluates the different jobs.
Evaluation and comparisons?
Different positions, the responsibilities, and it's just an outside source.
Yeah.
So it's not a internal favoritism thing.
Sounds like something the HR director might be able to set up.
How much is that gonna cost? Because it sounds like more money to me, that we don't have. It's all about dollars and cents with me people.
Microphone.
I was saying, didn't Rick Harris do that for the clerk's office?
Yes, Rick Harris did do it for the clerk's office, he actually did it for.
There was a big discrepancy.
Yes, absolutely, and that was conducted, yeah, a couple of years ago.
That was.
That was included in my presentation, and, and there's a separate report on, but in a couple of years, that'll be even wider.
I think that was what, twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Did he just do it for that office?
No, he did it for all of them, right?
Just the clerk's office?
He did it for, um, I'd have to go back and look now, I can give it to you, I have it.
Alright, okay, and finally then, uh, my ward meeting will be held uh, in Upton Park on Saturday, July fifteenth. Specific time to be determined, but uh, I think it's gonna be at ten AM. And that's what I have, thank you all for your patience and your attention, and have a good night.
Alderman Downerworth.
I just wanna thank everyone, everyone for calling, keep calling, you know? Um, whatever you need done, and then basically, whenever I had ever called anybody in any, any of these uh, positions, it's always been, hey, if you got time, maybe you don't know about it, can you check it out? And um, I just wanna work with them, we'll try this new uh, system of the email thing. I sent a couple out over the weekend and I got immediate responses. So I'm happy for that and understand everybody's busy, so you just get it done when you get it done, and then everybody have a happy Fourth.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, madam clerk. Um, I just wanna announce, I'm going to have a dumpster on July twenty-second. Uh, it's a Saturday, um, from eight AM to eleven. It'll be in front of the Mid Lane complex where we've had it before. Um, if anybody has any questions, they can give me a call about that. Um, and uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Couple of things real quick, uh, Greek Fest is taking place at Saint Demetrius Church, uh, July seventh, eighth, and ninth. So that's coming up, um, free parking, free admission, um, loads of good food, there's a raffle, uh, live music. So, uh, anybody interested, it's in the ninth ward, but by all means, anybody from the city should, uh, should check it out. Uh, there was a meeting recently that the EPA hosted, the mayor alluded, or discussed this during mayor's comments. Um, I just wanna reiterate the importance, uh, a lot of people come to city council, they wanna know what they can do, or they call and they wanna know what they can do. This is something that you can do, it is, it is immediate. Um, it is, it's an immediate need that the city has, but your ability to comment um, on the EPA's consideration of what to do with the coal ash ponds is incredibly important. Um, it has been commented by public officials, commented on by public officials at all levels. And uh, they are taking open comments from July fifth through August fourth, they being the EPA. Uh, admittedly, the method for submitting written comments is pretty convoluted. On the city's website, there is a link that tells you exactly how to do it, step-by-step process, and allows you to submit a comment. Any comments made at the EPA meeting will not be considered by the EPA. They have to have their comments in writing or sent via mail or hand delivery if anybody happens to be uh, at thirteen oh one Constitution Avenue in Washington DC. They can hand deliver those comments. Again, the coal ash ponds are a significant threat to the lakefront. I would encourage anybody and everybody to uh, submit their comments. Also, um, River Road construction is starting this week on looping of the water system. I've sent out an email to a number of residents along the River Road corridor. If anybody has questions, please reach out to me. We've also set up a meeting for July sixth to discuss the impact of those, uh, that construction. The conversation's been ongoing for quite a while, but it'll just be an opportunity to answer any questions about the construction, but also the, uh, the gas line that's being run and the impact of the looping of the water system. So, anyone who's familiar with River Road, it'll be from Manzi Court North all the way to Belvedere, where there will be uh, significant construction into the fall. Um, the good news is, it will be repaved when the construction is done, thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I send my condolences to those that have lost their loved ones, you're in my prayers. And I will be scheduling for a dumpster to be on our ward as well as our alleys to be cleaned by our um, why, uh, our young people. So that's all I have for now, thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Okay, so there's a few things I wanna talk about. First of all, I wanna make a motion to repeal the ordinance to let uh, anybody um, jump up in salary like five, six times without the city council approval. I mean, you could go through your steps, that's fine, but to keep going over and over and over, steps like that, it's just too much money. So, motion to um, rescind that order. I don't, I don't remember the ordinance.
I hate to interrupt, uh, Alderman Guzman, so only items that are on the agenda um, can be motioned. And so in this particular case, there was the, this item which did have a motion, um, and in terms of the salary ordinance, that was ultimately.
No, actually, that's not the one I'm talking about. I'm talking about the one I received an email, uh, that, ooh, I don't know the ordinance number.
No, 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 let me, let me help you. Uh, first Marcus and, and Alderman Guzman, if I may, he's talking about the salary.
Uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero dash one one three.
It's the salary ordinance, and in that salary ordinance, it says something to the effect of the mayor can increase the step in salary for the chief of staff and any department head at her leisure. His or her leisure, right? The office of the mayor can, can increase, make step increases for the chief of staff and of, any other department head is at their pleasure. And that, that's what he's referring to.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Alderman Turner, um, that's helpful. The, the, I guess, greater point is that that ordinance is not before us tonight, and so you wouldn't be able to take final action, you can always discuss it.
No, for discussion, that's why I wanna put the motion for discussion.
So we're going to a committee?
You, you just wanted to appear as an agenda item in some future?
Next time, actually, yes.
Okay, in, in that case, um, you, the proper procedure would be to um, express the interest in disappearing in the agenda item, and then as the agenda is constructed, um.
So I wanna put a motion to discuss ordinance number, where's it at? Twenty-three dash zero dash one one three at our next council meeting.
No, a motion wouldn't be the appropriate vehicle.
Yeah, we want a motion, we'll put it on the agenda, put it into a committee, on the agenda of a committee, right?
So if you want it to be placed on the agenda, generally, what you would do is that, um, you would, I, I believe it's, it's two or three aldermen or um, the mayor's office could contact um, my office. You can contact the mayor's office and it's placed on the uh, agenda, but it has to meet that.
Yeah, so we.
But that's.
But that's one of the steps, that's not the only step.
This is more the chaos and confusion that goes along with everything is gonna...
No, no, that's a one step, and this is another step.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a policy, there's a new policy that says we gotta send an email, then it changed, and we had to go on Teams and download an application and all that. And then I pointed out that under Robert's Rules of Order, it doesn't say anything about any of that stuff. It says you can make a motion, and that's what we go by. So that's what he's trying to do, is make a motion and get a second to put it in discussion. Then the mayor would determine, I guess, what committee it would go into. And I know it's confusing, 'cause we're all confused, right? So, if he makes the motion, I'll make the second.
It is. 'Cause what we were told is that you can, you could, there's a couple of different ways that you can actually put stuff on the agenda. One, either motion it, and second is fill out a three alderman, and then go forward from there.
Yeah, you can put in an application, but he doesn't want to, no.
Okay, if that's, if that's the process that Stu has blessed, I won't override him.
One of the problems is you can't discuss personnel publicly. So you could do it in closed session, if that would be, because if you did it, you can't discuss specific positions publicly, because it's personnel and there's confidentiality. So, would you like to have a...
No, he's discussing the ordinance, and the language of the ordinance that says that the mayor has the authority to make step increases at her lea-, at the mayor's leisure for a specific... She gave this guy that you did it.
I mean, you can discuss the general ordinance in a committee, but you can't discuss specific positions.
Specific, again, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, not the employees, just the ordinance, correct.
So you can't, when you talk about it, you can't say this position or that position.
No, 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 no.
As long as you understand that, 'cause that would be employee confidentiality.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about that, because the salaries, all employee salaries are open, visible to the public. You can do it, I'd do a search on the internet and get the salaries, and it tells every person, yours, everybody's. And it should be posted on the website. I don't know if that has to be posted once a year or something, but I think it should be there all the time. But anyway, you can just go on the internet and do Waukegan salaries.
It's in our budget.
Salary ordinance or something, it'll list everybody's salary, everyone, even mine. Ain't much. So, but anyway, I think we have a motion and a second to put this for discussion.
So we can just do a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Alderman Newsom is opposed. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll put it on the next meeting, but I do wanna talk to me about this first, okay? Anything else?
No, that'll be it, thank you.
Alderman Martinez.
Alright, what a long meeting. Alright, so first of all, I would like to thank Pastor Linda Irving from the Christian Faith Fellowship Church that did the beautiful invocation tonight. She's an example of tenacity, perseverance, because what many of you guys don't know is that unfortunately, she had lost her husband less than three weeks ago. So she showed some bravery for to come out here and did what she did, so I commend her for that. Also, I also wanna talk about the rains we just got. I drove around in my ward, and we got a lot of water this weekend. And there's, the potholes that we have have even gotten bigger, alright? And I do understand from my constituents, especially those on Hyde Park, Leith Avenue, and North Metropolitan, that with the standard water, we have a bigger issue than we think. It can't be fixed overnight, we can't put a band-aid to it. I have been in contact with the engineer, Jesus, who educated me on those particular streets that have that ongoing problem. So therefore, there's money that is being appropriated, so I just want my constituents to know that I am on it. It's not an easy fix, so please bear with me, I am working on it. I see that this is an ongoing problem. It has, it hasn't, it has been going on ever since I've been in office, so. I am working on it, so please, your diligence would be much appreciated. Also, just also wanna let everyone know, again, with the legal fireworks, it is against the law in our city. I do wanna thank the mayor for providing those signs that I did put out in my ward. As a matter of fact, I ran out of them. I had phone calls and emails, a particular one, one constituent said that, thank you for that sign. She has not seen that in ten years. It kinda deterred her neighbor, they kinda got a hold of it. So I do wanna thank you for that, mayor. And I think they were, they are kinda affected, but that's what we can do. We can probably, we can prevent, right? We can't, we can't, people are gonna do what they wanna do as fire, with the illegal fireworks. But just be safe, if you are gonna use fireworks, please let an adult handle it. Please don't let the children get a hold of it. We all know what can happen if it gets into the wrong hands. So please use your better judgment, you know, be very mindful when you are out there using the fireworks or blowing them up. Alright, so also just want to let people know that I've been working with, or talking to a lot of my constituents, with the homeowners, and also with the business owners. I have a huge problem with the homelessness in my ward. So I've been out there, I've been talking to the homeless people. I actually develop a rapport with them, they know who I am. And I'm also working with the businesses that have complained with the constant loitering that's been going on to my constituents. I just want you to know that I am on it, I hear ya, I'm working on it. That's another thing that I, my long-term goal is to work with Pads Home and Shelter to get some kinda, some level of knowledge of what we can do to try to curtail that. When I'm with them, I do offer them resources, also offer them empowerment. But that is something I am working on. So thanks for that, thanks for those who have called, and I will continue to work on that. And then, one more thing, just wanna let everybody know that my phone number's eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. Again, it's eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. And for my Latino constituents who are hearing me, I would just like to let them know that, if you need to get a hold of me, por favor, me puede llamar en ocho cuatro siete tres nueve cero veintiséis ochenta y nueve. Gracias por su apoyo. And what I simply said, was a public service in Austin, Spanish, say that I am available, alright? I knew that, I know that there was a problem, and I know I brought this up last time, but there seems to be a couple of people in my ward who are telling me that I should be using the universal language of English. But for those who say that, I will say this much, that we do have Latino taxpayers who are homeowners, who are also citizens, who prefer me to speak in Spanish. So I'm not here to offend anybody, I'm here to strictly do the work of the people. And I hope you can understand it in any language, alright? Understand that I'm here to work with everyone, I'm not working with any particular group or ethnicity. I'm here to do the work of the people, the work of the ward, to make, to beautify it, to safeguard your interests. So please keep that in mind, alright? Finally, I'd just like to say, please be safe, be mindful, but most of all, let's all be a good neighbor. Thank you, and happy Fourth of July.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. Just wanna mention a few things that happened. On, good news, June twenty-fourth, YCC with Public Works went to the fourth ward, and they cleaned up an alley. Before, you should've seen the pictures, you couldn't even walk through the alley. And that was on Fulton Avenue. And so thank you to YCC and the Public Works for clearing up that alley. It's, you can walk through it now, it's, you know, it's nice. And also, this weekend, Community Outreach Waukegan, what they do is, it's an organization that they have youth, and they let them choose a project to do. And one of the young girls, Brianna, decided to do alley cleanup as well. So that was in Laurel, with one of the, one of the residents, Jeanette also. We clean up all of the Laurel Alley in the fourth ward. And all the videos and pictures are on my Facebook, on my Alderman Facebook. You guys wanna check it out, they did a great job. And for those two cleanups, Fernando, a business owner in Waukegan, provided the kids in the chaperones food through him. So, big thank you to Fernando for providing that for the kids in the chaperones. Another issue that has been brought up, and I believe they're gonna create a letter for me in the fourth ward around Washington Park. If you talk to some of the residents behind their house, you can see that there's bullet holes all over the residence's house in the back. And they're very concerned, I mean, this is, some are from the past, but some, they're just very concerned. They're scared of the gun violence, and they see, they hear it every day almost. So just wanna let that know, you know, let them know that we, you know, will be talking with the rest of the council members and the mayor to see what we can do about that. Another thing is, do we have CDBG here? Someone, okay. Is there something, any kind of grants that helps with any kind of, like, tree cutting? Nothing? We can't do trees? Okay. Is there any grants to look for in that area that helps residents with that? No? Okay. 'Cause also, you know, residents do reach out to me, but, you know, I wish I can help residents solve their issues with their trees, but it's in their own private property. And unfortunately, Mother Nature kinda starts on one property and makes it go to the next property, and it's an issue. You know, that's something that we, you know, we would love to help out with, but, you know, it's something that residents should be taking care of their own. But, you know, I do welcome tree companies to reach out to me, to see maybe we can get a good deal for the elderly or residents. Also, one question, in terms of noise ordinances, who would be in charge of that?
That would be Chief Navarro.
Okay. Is there something online that, or how do we treat that in terms of, you know, residents complaining about the noise for their neighbors or whatnot? Call nine one one? Okay. And other than that, that's all they can really do? Is there like a certain ordinance that there is?
There's a state law of the ordinance. You can also work with the D.C. law service.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's pretty much it. One question, as it keeps coming up, is there a reason why we can't put the camera on the people that are talking? Is there like a...
I'll talk to the camera people and see what we can work out. But we have a new camera system, so I don't know all the camera system. So, we'll see. As far as your tree situation, it is very difficult to get grant money. Even when we lost all the trees due to the, what was it, ash bore. We had looked into money for restoring those, like, being able to plant new ones. And that is not something that you see money for. Once in a great while, the Botanic Gardens will have something that they'll give out. But that's been iffy during the last couple of years. But as far as actually getting grants for that, it's not. If it is a tree issue going onto another neighbor's property, that becomes a civil issue, and they have to sort that out, you know, either by lawsuit or whatever, arbitration, whatever they can work out, if it's on private property.
One other thing, I just wanted to bring it up to awareness that, you know, I wish I can help out, but it's more of a civil thing. And, you know, again, my thing would be to let people know that I am looking for companies that would help out some of the older residents that aren't of fixed income. Maybe we can help them out with a little bit better pricing. Please reach out to me, but thank you for...
And if there's a Waukegan company that is willing to work on that, it would be even better, because then you don't have the distance of driving and that kinda stuff. So, any tree companies out there that would like to offer packages to seniors or whatever, you know, please let us know at the city, we'd love to work with you. But that's one that, that's been one of our difficulties.
So I have a guy for that, give me a call tomorrow, and I'll put you in touch with him, okay? Got it, got it. By the neighborhood.
Is he licensed?
Yes.
Good, okay.
And that's pretty much it. I hope everyone has a happy Fourth of July, be safe. Fireworks are illegal, so, you know, avoid that. And we're still good with our fireworks show, I believe. So we invite everyone to show up, I'll be there downtown. That's it, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, Alderman Turner, who was the second? I need a second on a motion to adjourn. Alderman Florian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a safe Fourth.